Start this committee at the whole. We have two guests here. We have, I thought he was a lieutenant, but he's just a fireman, Tom Carcone.
I'm President of the Union.
President of the Union, thank you.
I'm not here in my capacity as a firefighter.
You can track him. President of the Union, Tom Carcone, and Ron Dunn, who's a lawyer for the union.
Local thirty-two.
Local thirty-two.
I represent firefighters all over the state.
And thank you for coming. I appreciate you coming today. Before we start, I do have some, a letter from the Michael Gleaming mayor. I guess I could read this to get things started, and then maybe you guys could work off of that. Do you have a copy of it? Do you guys have a copy of this?
We don't.
I would like to, let me get you a copy.
Are you reading it out loud, or?
I do, but you don't want to.
Here, here.
Take mine, I'll share mine. All right, this memo is being written and delivered with the understanding that the administration did not request or suggest that legislation to remove the Assistant Chief's position was necessary for any reason. In reviewing the discussion of the common council, it did become clear that establishing some sort of cost-saving or revenue generation was connected to removing the Assistant Chief's position. As the mayor, I can state that of all the ways we could be reducing costs and liability and adding efficiencies, removing the Assistant Chief's position from the management of the Utica Fire Department is not one of them. This is the first time I've read this, so if it's from a live document. This memo addresses the following: A succinct explanation of how Chief, Assistant Chief, and Deputy Chiefs work together to manage the department. And, one, a request to replace the Chief Marshal position with a Fire Marshal. And, two, statements on why the Fire Marshal's office should not lead the twelve oh three and ROP inspections, but in certain circumstances may be part of them. Okay, next is Utica Fire Department Management Command Staff. The leading structure of the Utica Fire Department is organized to promote clear command, effective communications, and operational efficiency. This three-tiered model consists of the Fire Chief, Assistant Fire Chief, and Deputy Fire Chief, each with its defined responsibilities that contributes to a cohesive and accountable chain of command. The Fire Chief is the top executive of the department, responsible for the overall leadership and management of all operations. Key duties include: Setting the department's strategic direction and long-term goals; overseeing policy development and compliance with NFPA standards, New York State regulations, and local ordinances; managing the department's budget and resource allocation; representing department interactions with city leadership, external agencies, and the public; and delegating authority to subordinates while maintaining the ultimate accountability for departmental performances. Now, the Assistant Fire Chief reports directly to the Fire Chief and serves as the department's second-in-command. Primarily, primary responsibilities include direct supervision of division heads, suppression EMS training, fire prevention; overseeing the department's day-to-day operations and ensuring alignment and strategic goals; coordinating with inter-divisional communications and operations; assisting as the Fire Chief in their absence; leading labor relation efforts and participating in internal policy developments and in long-term planning under the direction of the Chief. The Deputy Fire Chief operates under the direction of the Assistant Fire Chief and is primarily responsible for operational field leadership. On a platoon basis, responsibilities include: Supervision company officers and ensuring proper implementation of departmental policies at the station level; overseeing the readiness and performance of fire suppression, emergency response, and training operations; supporting departmental-wise initiatives by translating strategic directives into frontline action; and ensuring the safety, preparedness, and accountability of all operational personnel. The structured leadership system promotes efficiency, accountability, and a shared mission. The Fire Chief establishes the department's overall vision and ensures alignment with city priorities. The Assistant Fire Chief translates that vision into actionable plans and oversees the comprehensive department functions. The Deputy Fire Chief ensures that those plans are executed effectively and on the grounds as part of the staffing of each platoon. Together, the leadership team provides strategic, operational, and tactical oversight to protect the lives and property of Utica residents and support the work of the department's one hundred and thirty-two members. Potential for the replacement of Chief Fire Marshal with a Fire Marshal. The Fire Marshal's office currently is staffed with one Chief, Fire Marshal, and one Fire Marshal. Regardless of who holds the position, this creates management chain within an office of two and creates the semblance that the Chief is the boss of the other Fire Marshal. There are two Fire Marshals in the office for good purpose. In a city of the size of this size, we need both Marshall covered, cover the city, we need both Marshall covering the city, and in case that one is not able to work for any reason, the other one can cover. The two Fire Marshals need to be peer positions under the direction of the management of the department, the Chief and Assistant Chief for global directions, and the Deputy Chief in the case of specific platoon-based demands of the job. If anything comes from the discussion of the legislation the council has proposed, it would be retain the same head count in the Fire Marshal's office, but replace the Chief Fire Marshal with a Fire Marshal. This position is currently vacant, and there would be no demotions involved with this move. It would simply create a better staff organization to execute the need of the city. Twelve oh threes and ROPs. During the overall discussion of the proposed legislation to remove the Assistant Fire Chief from the Utica Fire Department complement, there were conversions, excuse me, thank you, there were conversations that had the city, oh hang on, there were conversations had that the city could end up having the Fire Marshal's office do more ROPs and twelve oh threes. This is not a direct function of the Fire Marshal's office, nor should it become one. The twelve oh three and ROP extend past the Fire Marshal's duties. And if the Fire Marshal's office is involved, it is part of the overall inspection, not as a lead. For commercial two oh three inspections, the Code Office both leads and completes the inspections. While the Fire Department currently handles all recurring residential inspections for twelve oh threes and ROPs, the Fire Marshal office is only needed for ticketing and/or fire inspection, which is a small portion of the work, not the, not the primary function. In conclusion here, to best manage the ROP and twelve oh three inspections, if any changes be made, considering this is part of the common council's discussions, this administration would bring more of the responsibility, if not all, into the Code's department, calling upon the Fire Marshal's office for fire inspections only. Regards, Michael "Gleaming" Mayor of the City of Utica. So I just wanted to read that, give everybody an idea. So Tommy, your idea would here, you'd like us to go around and ask any questions.
This isn't my meeting. I was invited here, so, I mean.
Is there anything you'd like to say before we start? I'll give you one more.
Well, I mean, there's obviously some discrepancies in here. The Assistant Chief isn't leading labor relation efforts. That's not their, their position or job responsibilities. In fact, that goes to show that when the Assistant Chief was appointed to Assistant Chief, he was actually a union member, which would restrict him from being in charge of labor relations efforts. So that couldn't have been the job qualifications at the time that the job was actually, was actually filled in the history of the Assistant Chief's position, which is another example of how they have morphed the Assistant Chief's position into a second department head instead of the daily day-to-day operations. You'll go back, I believe everybody in this council received a letter from Deputy Chief Matt Ambrose, who just recently retired last month, just not even a month ago. He retired, and I think he was explicit in making it clear that the Assistant Chief doesn't have a presence, not only at the station, but also on fire grounds, that he doesn't have qualifications and doesn't come back to fire scenes or, or manage fire scenes, and that it's actually the Deputy Chiefs. The also, the three-tiered system here that we're looking at of the Chief, the Assistant Chief, and the Deputy, the Fire, Deputy Fire Chiefs, also consists of the third-in-command, which is the Chief Fire Marshal, which has been vacant for the last four months. So, I mean, they're not even consistent with whose responsibilities are what, because the three-tiered system and the three top-ranking officers are actually inclusive to the Chief Fire Marshal that's not mentioned in here at all. So, yeah, I find some discrepancies in, in this letter, and I think, you know, the testimony from the next highest-ranking position, which would have, that's filled, would be Deputy Chief's position of Matt Ambrose, who just retired, making it clear that that's inconsistent with everything that's written in here from this to what is actually taking place in the department from the highest-ranking officers. He contributed his retirement early to some of these problems. I believe that the fact that the Chief Fire Marshal position hasn't been filled in for four months shows an issue with the responsibilities of the one and two-in-command of not filling the position and making sure they have the appropriate staff. I think that the fact that this even says labor management changes the job duties and job descriptions from day-to-day to actual management staff, which the Assistant Chief's position was never part of because they were actually part of the union. So, you know, this is a lot of the reasons why we believe that the, the duties, the position itself could be redistributed to better, better serve the department and in a better capacity within the department for the benefit of our services and for the, you know, the day-to-day operations, which the Assistant Chief's position formerly and traditionally was utilized for. I don't want to speak on the legislation until the people that presented the legislation actually speak first, but I do have an alternate request of the council that I can get into later as we speak. But just off the top and off the cusp, you know, very rarely do we even see the Chief and the Assistant Chief there at the same time. That was also mentioned in Deputy Chief Ambrose's letter to you guys. Just two weeks ago, both of them took simultaneous week vacations. This is at the same time that, you know, their position is coming in front of the council of whether or not the hundred and fifty thousand dollar price tag of having an Assistant Chief is needed. Both of them actually took off for simultaneous vacations for the same week and leaving a vacancy in the third-in-command at the Chief Fire Marshal's office because they failed to meet their duties of filling in in the last four months and leaving the daily operations on the Deputy Chiefs. You know, the Chief gets in front of you and says, we need these, we need the Assistant Chief's position for daily operations, but neither of them are there on weekends. They take simultaneous vacations. Very rarely do we see either one of them there. And that's, that's part of the problem that, you know, is affecting the department. You have heard from our members, we did have a vote of no confidence. Seventy-five people voted. That's, that's a large number in our department. If anybody's part of a union, to get that kind of turnout is, is a major subject to the employees that work here for the City of Utica. That's about the same turnout we get for our contract approvals or disapprovals. Fifty, fifty-three members out of the seventy-five voted that they have no confidence in their Chief and the management structure that they have or for their future plan of the department. And sixty-four out of seventy-five voted that they have no confidence in our Assistant Chief or the current structure or his, his future management in the department. You know, basically what I'm asking of the council is to listen to your employees. You know, I understand everybody says, you know, respect the command structure and everything else, but our command structure is being broken down. It's not being reinforced. We have two people working at the same position. The third-in-command is left vacant, and your members are struggling on the day-to-day operations without that, that leadership that we all are looking for, and they, they made that clear with their vote. If sixty-five out of, or sixty-four out of seventy-five guys vote that they have no confidence in my leadership skills, I would turn around and, and consider whether or not I should step down for the betterment of the department if I cared more about it than my paycheck. And, you know, I, I think there should be some reflection. I saw the Chief stand up at our last council meeting. He did take some accountability and say he was going to make change, but they have made zero efforts as to date to have any labor management meeting with the employee organization to hear our voice or our concerns. So the mayor's ignoring it, the Chiefs are ignoring it, and the only opportunity that we have is our members are, are reaching out to this common council to address the employees that work for the City of Utica. Now, I heard the mayor go on the radio and talk about replacing Dave Short because he felt lost the leadership and, the leadership and the following of his men and women that work in the DPW. Our lives are on the line when we go to work in the Fire Department. We should have confidence in our leadership. And an adjustment was made there, and why wouldn't that be the same circumstances within the Fire Department where our guys' lives are on the line every single day? And leadership is paramilitary and so important. And sixty-four out of seventy-five guys are coming back to you and telling you we need a change in the structure, and what they have right now is not working. You had two circumstances in our department that really need to be addressed here that the administration and the mayor's office failed to address. Everybody remembers under Chief John Kelly when he was interim chief and the conflict that took place there, and he faced a eight-hour suspension for his actions where he, you know, subordinates actually came forward with, you know, participating in boot acts in front of him as his superior officer. And, you know, he received an eight-hour penalty and lost his interim, his interim position and was able to continue to work today, and he's still working with the same people that testified in that case on the same shift, same platoon, in the same firehouse, and nobody's taken any, any action to change that. You know, sixty-five guys are coming forward, and they're displeased in the Assistant Chief, and nobody's even, nobody's even concerned with the work environment that we have to work in. We don't have confidence that we'll be taken care of if thing goes wrong. There has been circumstances that timesheets have been filled out when people, when he wasn't actually at work. It's been reported to the mayor. The mayor went back and allowed him to just put in and submit a vacation day without any discipline. So if the action's not being taken at the mayor's office to make a good and healthy work environment for our firefighters, which are serving you and people and taxpayers that you represent every day, we're turning to this council to make a change within that department. And the change isn't a personnel change, it's a structure change. And once they took the Assistant Chief's position and made it a management executive, it failed to serve in the capacity that the Assistant Chief position has traditionally been held and needs to be held for the daily function and operation in the department. Now, if that's removed, it doesn't necessarily have to be for a Fire Marshal's position. It could also be for an additional administrative position that would return back to the capacities of daily oversight of the department instead of being an additional management staff for the City of Utica. Today, we had a meeting at City Hall for our contract negotiations. We looked across the table at about a million dollars' worth of salaries. I mean, you had a hundred and fifty thousand dollar Assistant Chief, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar Chief. You had a probably a hundred and fifty, a hundred thousand dollar law firm and a seventy thousand dollar Public Safety Commissioner. I mean, they're, they're overloaded in management staff, working against our local. And, and these problems aren't taking place in the Police Department. It's unilaterally in the Fire Department. The appointments were made under Palmery's for those purposes, to have conflict, when in the Fire Department, ever since the John Kelly trial period ended, it was just another guy that wasn't part of the membership that would actively work against the membership. And what we're, what we're asking this council to do is reorganize the structure in order to make our, our department functional again, so the men and women that work and serve the city can do it safely and confidently, that the City of Utica actually cares about their voice and they actually cares about their well-being.
All right, great, thank you. We're gonna start going around and ask questions here, and I'm gonna go right around.
You can come back to me if you need to.
Okay.
I'm gonna push your bike and put it, put it towards you. Yes, please.
Yes.
Councilman Bitter?
Yeah, just a question for Mr. Dunn. I planned on asking Corporation Counsel this, but I'm unable to. Did you, did you happen to read this May eleventh, twenty twenty-one contract for the Fire Chief and Assistant Fire Chief? I'm not sure if you had a copy at any point or reviewed it.
Oh, yes.
Okay. It, I think in the beginning, you mentioned you represent unions throughout the state. Just, just from my own knowledge, are these, are these types of contracts common throughout the state and municipalities? Can you just touch on that a little bit?
What's unusual in Utica is that you have a union at the top. What's typical is you have individual employment agreements with the Chief. Very unusual to have the Chief be in a union.
Have you seen it before in your experience? I mean, has it happened?
I was, I was stunned when I saw that. I was, I was stunned when I saw that the police chief, Benny Matundo, was in a union. That was the first time I ever saw a union member, and he was in the police union here in Utica. So, that's, that's, I can't say for sure that I've never seen it, but what, it's, it's very uncommon. It's typically the chief would be a management, de-management confidential person, and by definition, if you're management confidential, you're not in the union. It's very unusual.
Okay. Just, the reason I ask is, you know, the original memo we received from Corporation Council mentioned the contract, and obviously, we got our hands on the contract, we're able to look at it in, in further detail, so I just wanted to ask that. I'm all set for now. Maybe I'll ask some more questions as we make our way around. Thank you.
Joe, that, that was the first time that the chiefs got a recognition clause for recognition as a union in that contract. So, that was the initial recognition clause that they were ever afforded for that?
We, you, you can't be a union of one. It requires at least two to be a union.
That's what we got here, too.
Correct. But for a long time, the assistant chief was a, was in Local Thirty-two.
Councilman Garcon?
First of all, I'm very disappointed that nobody's respected the council to come here and show their faces today, either the fire chief, the mayor, the mayor's assistant. I think it's very disrespectful to the rest of the council here and to the union. And second of all, I'd like to know this, the vote of non-confidence, what was, what was their biggest reasons for the vote of non-confidence?
So, there, there was a plethora of reasons. The, the most common and the most, the most significant were obviously our 207A injuries that our injured in light duty firefighters aren't being taken care of and their claims are being denied in most cases before they even get to a medical exam. And then they're put through unnecessary medical exams by doctors that are found uncredible throughout the state, either by arbitrators or by, or actual judges, finding their credibility to be sketchy at best and not credible, and coming back with results that, you know, contest 207A claims in order to put, put members out on their own dime fighting these claims and their denials until they bankrupt them. A lot of bills aren't getting paid. We had one member that had to declare private bankruptcy off of a sixty thousand dollar bill on a approved 207A claim that was never paid by the city of Utica. We had, we have a couple that are out of work today because their claims were denied even after approval. There's a lot of manipulations to the light duty process and attempting to order people back before they're cleared to come back for light duty and resulting in denials of their claim and closing down their claims. So, one of the major concerns is guys don't feel safe if they get hurt on the job that the city of Utica is actually going to take care of them. We went from a position where maybe two out of fifteen were being denied to maybe eight out of ten are being denied or manipulated in the process. We have guys that are out on permanency that are waiting for New York State disability to remove them from the New York, from the city of Utica payroll, putting them on the dime of New York State instead of the city of Utica, and they've been calling them, hiring these doctors to give them IMEs to call them back for light duty, which is putting their claims for permanency in jeopardy of being approved and actually coming off of the payroll. They're counterproductive in what they're doing with their 207A claims, not to mention not playing unfairly with guys that are hurt on the line of duty. The other things were, you know, the policy setting by the chief. We'll work on a, we'll have a labor management meeting with the chief. He'll come to a policy on something we discussed together. That policy will be overridden once, twice by the assistant chief, who didn't even sit in on those meetings or hear why we put those things in, into, enacted. I'll give you another example. One of the, one was a perfect example was under Chief Barefoot. He put out a directive saying that, you know, there'll be no emergency responses or no non-emergency responses until nine-thirty or nine-fifteen P.M. That gives our guys the opportunity to come in at eight o'clock, make sure they go through their rigs, make sure all their equipment's working properly, that their SEBA, their breathing apparatus is properly working, that they have everything in order for the first emergency call that comes through for the day. This is, and Chief Barefoot, former military guy, went into extreme description of the importance of preparedness, professionalism, safety, and everything else for our job. The assistant chief's first communication when he put out as assistant chief was rescinding that communication so that we could do non-emergency details before nine-thirty. Those are the kind of things that are taking place, that they don't feel that the, the safety is being addressed. Our guys at Station Seven that are working the ambulance, they're doing an excessive amount of calls that are well beyond the safety standards of, of any department, sometimes double what they should be doing in a twenty-four hour shift, to the point they can't keep their eyes open and they're struggling to get through a work shift and they feel burnt out, and they feel that there's nobody hearing their voice, their voice. We've raised these concerns for Station Seven with multiple contract negotiations. We raised it as our first thing again today. Labor management meetings are being refused to even discuss these concerns. They're not even listening to the voice of the employees, and, and it shows even after the vote of no confidence. So, the vote of no confidence wasn't to insult or hurt anybody, it was in order to get somebody to address our concerns. And here we are, the chief will even stand in front of you and say he's self-reflecting on some of these things. We have to make some adjustments on 207A, we have to make some adjustments on this, but they're still refusing to even discuss them with us. So, you can't hear the employees' voice if you're not meeting with the employee organization, and they're just continuing to shut us down, and if there isn't a change, I could only imagine this circumstance getting worse and the work environment for our members becoming more dangerous and more abusive. And, and that's, that's why we took the vote of no confidence, to put it on the public forum for, for somebody that we're desperately looking for, making change for the safety of our firefighters and the betterment of our job. The, the thing that called for the vote of no confidence is we have a, I won't say a recruitment problem, but a serious retention problem. Never before in the history of our department has it been like it is right now. In the last month, we had five firefighters retire. These were lifelong firefighters. Testa, Deputy Chief Matt Ambrose, Fred DeCarlo, he had the save in the Adrian Terrace Building. These guys, Milton Reeves, our vice president of our union, these guys that, guys that planned on stay, stay twenty-eight, thirty-two years, and they're leaving because of, you know, the discouragement of the job and reporting to the job and the way management's running our job. And it's not only a, a retention of our senior guys' problem. We had five of our newest employees try to lateral transfer to Syracuse Fire Department. And, you know, Ron raised this even earlier, it's not like they're going to Rome or a lesser department. It's not a matter of their workload, Syracuse is just as busy. It's them saying, "I want out of here." And I had five guys that, that interviewed for Syracuse. One of them got hired, he's one of our best employees, next military guy, he was serving in the, in, in the reserves at the time, and he didn't feel he was getting the proper time off from the city of Utica. He transferred out to Syracuse, and one of the other ones just resigned from, from Utica after he didn't get the job in Syracuse. And his, what he mentioned to me was, I met the assistant chief while I was in the academy, and I never met him again until the day that I resigned. And, you know, he doesn't, one, one of his best friends that works at the square had his 207A claim denied with, within his first two years on the job, and they're trying to say that he's out of sick leave, and they're trying to get him off the payroll and not pay, not pay his paychecks after he got injured within his first two years. The basis of his denial was that he went to the doctor's office the following morning and not immediately from work, and his supervisor never wrote a special report describing the injury. Not even he didn't write a special report, his supervisor did. So, based off of technicality, he's being denied his claim with less than two years on and no sick leave to compensate him. And that's the type of things that are going on, and it's totally disgraceful to our firefighters. All of these things were discussed in our vote of no confidence, the retention problem. Recruitment problem is existing across the state, so I'm not going to sit here and do you guys false information. When I got on the job, there was three hundred and thirty-eight people that took the civil service exam. In our last exam, we had eighty-six or ninety-three. So, the candidates aren't coming out for the job, that's a problem statewide, but that makes it more important to keep the employees that you have. And when you've got five that are retiring, five that are trying to lateral transfer, and Syracuse is going to have a second round of lateral transfers coming up, and all of our guys are looking forward to applying again, you know, that's a serious problem because we don't have the guys to fill the spots when they leave. And if they don't feel safe if they get hurt, that's the most dangerous part, and if they don't have confidence in their leadership, somebody has to make a change. And that's, that's what we're here for today. Ron could discuss the 207A process a little bit better than I. You know, he is the guru of 207A claims in most municipalities, even in the police department. Instead of denying a claim based off of improper paperwork, their, their chiefs are sitting down with them and helping them file their paperwork, making sure that everything is filled out to make sure their employees are taken care of. Here in Utica, they're looking for reasons to deny their claims. He was just telling me, you know, I just had a chief and a union president calling it together the other day to make sure that the claim is filed in the right way for the employee. Ours are denying our claims, and that's disgraceful inside itself. And we had a, a cancer patient that's under our presumptive cancer bill. Our attorney had to do two days of research to make sure that it was compactively filed in the proper format and proper way because we're, you know, we're just expecting that the city will probably give a denial on the cancer claim under the presumption of bill itself. Like, that's dangerous for us. That's not a good work environment for us, and the people that are running the department should be ashamed of themselves for letting their employees feel that way. And they're not even concerned. You want to talk about the arrogance, you get a vote of no confidence, and your assistant chief's position is on the line, and you both take simultaneous vacations at the same time, leaving nobody to leave the city. You have a mayor that when we report that he put his time sheets in at headquarters when the chief was on, on vacation, and he's playing in a golf tournament in Newark with his son, and we bring it to the chief, the mayor's attention, he lets him go back and put a vacation day in instead of bringing him up on, on discipline. And then when one of our guys gets in an accident, they'll try and give a forty-eight hours of penalty. Like, this is the disgraceful stuff that's going on in our department, and nobody's seeing outside of our department, and the reason why our guys are making a vote of no confidence within our department. You want to play down the numbers if you want to say that it's not the department. Seventy-five people voted yes out of a hundred and twenty that were eligible, and they already met over the majority of the whole hundred and twenty just out of seventy-five people showing up. That's a problem.
Councilman Garcon, you have any other questions?
Well, I think it's disgraceful that the mayor isn't here to hear all of this, because I think he should definitely hear them. I mean...
That's, that's another one. Our arbitration award, even when we go to court and we win a legitimate grievance, and the arbitrator comes back with an award, they don't comply with it. We'll have to go back to court three more times to get it confirmed from Supreme Court in order to put them in contempt if they don't comply with it rather than just following the decision of the arbitrator, which is basically prolonging any efficient process. We already have a perm decision where the assistant chief's names for retaliating against the union itself. And retaliation is not political retaliation, there's no such thing. You're a politician, it's either politics, people support you or they don't. Retaliation exists in the workplace. Somebody with the authority that abuses their authority to retaliate against their employees and subordinates. Subordinates don't have the authority to retaliate against their superiors.
Oh, I'm glad we got to hear this because some people didn't even want to come here to listen to this.
I, I think you could explain the, the 207A claims a little bit.
All right, we're going to move on to Councilman Ervey.
Oh, okay. So, I do have a couple of questions. How long has the assistant deputy chief been in his position?
Since two thousand and nineteen.
Two thousand and what?
Nineteen. I believe it was in August.
And usually, you were saying something about the deputy fire chief that he retired?
Deputy Chief Matt Ambrose?
Yeah.
He wrote a, a personal letter to every one of you as council people?
Has he retired?
Yes, he did. He just retired. He was one of the five that just left last month.
And when did he write this letter? Do you know?
He wrote it to you after the chief went on the radio or the mayor went on the radio. He submitted it after the legislation was proposed to you guys prior to your last council meeting.
Okay. I was just wondering, since the assistant fire chief's been in the position since two thousand and nineteen, and did he, did he leave recently?
So, so, I, I, I know, and I don't mean to go in a different direction.
Oh, no, go ahead.
But the, the vote of no confidence is probably two years overdue, and, you know, one of my board members mentioned that to me. The problem was that we actually tried to make a change administratively through the mayor's office by advocating for a specific mayor to come in. What happens is they go in and with the additional support from Corporation Council, maybe or maybe not because he's paying them privately, or maybe or maybe not because he's going back to the mayor and saying, "Look at all this money I'm saving you on the backs of injured firefighters." They gain support, and we wanted to give the opportunity to this mayor and this administration to have labor management and discuss this. We sent him a labor management request on January fourth. He asked us to patiently wait for him to get a public safety commissioner. We waited for the public safety commissioner, and we asked for the labor management meeting. He said, "Wait until we hire a firm to negotiate our contract and we'll talk about it then." Here we are, a year into his administration, and the change hasn't been made by him. So, we were left with no choice to make the vote of no confidence and publicly say it and publicly cry for help, which nobody in our department likes to bring that attention to our department, but at this point, it was our last resort, and we tried to exhaust every avenue before then. So, I, I didn't know if you were trying to say between two thousand and nineteen and now, why haven't we said anything?
That's what I'm saying, because there's always a concern.
We have, we just didn't want to...
At least for me, when somebody resigns or retires or whatever, and then they want to put a letter in or whatever they're going to do. That's always a concern, but I understand what you're saying.
There is a fear of retaliation.
And you represent yourself very well, but it's, it's a concern when, when they leave and they write a letter like that. And I did read this letter.
They, they feel safe after they're gone. We still have to work under the, under the potential of retaliation every day. We have per wards saying that they retaliated against us, and instead of making corrective action, they'll turn around and appeal the award, which will tie it up and allow them to behave that way for another six months or whatever else. Ron, you want to speak to that?
Retaliation against Deputy Chief Ambrose.
So, he waited two years of court. He never got it.
That's what defines it. He was retaliated against, as was his brother.
Did he put something in before?
Oh, yeah.
The letter that he sent recently?
Yeah, they, they were both of them.
Okay.
For their union activity. That's what perled out.
They both received, they both received forty-eight hour suspensions for union activity and were awarded it back, and the city still hasn't given their forty-eight hours because the city's even trying to appeal per's decision.
And you're saying that the assistant fire chief is more management than frontline or in the union?
Historically, the position has always been day-to-day operations and associated to the union and the operation of the department. Since it's left, it's just become another management staff, similar to the public safety commissioner.
So, the assistant fire chief is not in the union?
He's also playing his own doctor and attorney from the position.
I just wanted to make sure.
No, he's, he's no longer in our union.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, man.
I, I wouldn't interrupt you.
No, no, you're good.
Councilman Beatrice?
Yes. So, the reason, my main concern with putting this legislation in committee was to talk about, is this a binding contract? You spoke that anything more than two people is a union. I'm told this is a binding legal contract. If it's a binding legal contract, we can maybe control the complement, but what do we, if we can't, if the fire chief has, the assistant fire chief has a contract, then we basically don't have control over that? And even if we control the complement, if the guy has a legal contract and went to court, I, I'd like some, you're a lawyer, you're a lawyer, I'd like to hear about that before I ask any more questions, because to me, if there's a legal contract here, what are we doing here? It ends next year. And my, my other question is, you guys got totally a hundred percent right with your claims, terrible stuff that's going on, but I really don't see how getting rid of the assistant fire chief is going to make any of that better. I mean, the same people that are in charge, let's, let's, let's call the spade a spade. The mayor, wait, the mayor and the fire chief call the shots, okay? They're the ones who promote the people, put them where they want to go. So, if he's, even if we were to do that, I believe you should, we should keep the structure that we have and change some policies is what, what I believe we should do.
Are you asking me?
No, I, I want to, first question I want to know from the judge, our judge.
Judge?
You're a lawyer here. Is that a legal... You're a lawyer here. Is that a legal binding contract? Because that's why we all put this in committee to start with. Not to go.
I'll speak for yourself.
Well, okay. I will speak for myself. So.
I'm gonna decline to give an opinion about whether the city has a binding legal contract with that group. That's just, that's not, that's not something that myself as the union lawyer, I'm, I'm gonna give you that.
That should be deferment to the city.
That's, that's, the city's got lawyers to do that. I, I will say this.
Well, that's why I'm gonna ask.
I will say this. I do think that when the city makes an agreement with Local Thirty-two, they ought to live up to it. And they haven't.
So that agreement wasn't with Local Thirty-two?
What he's saying is if they don't live up to ours.
That's a problem.
My, my next, my next question, my next question is gonna be about union stuff because I'm gonna, once I, I want to come to it. But can you answer my question, Judge?
Yes.
So that contract that the fire chief and the Assistant Fire Chief had, is that a binding contract?
Well, that's a question for a court to answer, not me. And the Corporation Council sent a memo.
And what did that say?
By its leading person up there, Charles Brown. And I told him, we discussed this matter because Councilman Testa brought up a good point. We do control the complement. That is black letter law. No question about that at all. We control the complement. The same case that, that reinforced that said, the common counsel has no business in contract negotiations of any kind. And we do not. It sounds to me, and Mr. Carcone, I think, has succinctly said that there is strife within the fire department. I don't, I don't know enough about the fire department. I'm not a labor law. But I'll tell you, our laws, the charter that says that we have control of the complement, doesn't talk about the structure. It doesn't talk about the administration of the, the fire department or police department. Because that gets into the executive role. The fire chief and the police chief are usually appointed by the mayor. And so are other people who, jobs. And all the negotiation of all the years that I've been here with both of those departments have always been with the executive branch and the union. Because they have the greatest knowledge about both. Now, there is, and been submitted to us, which has been distributed amongst you, what appears to be a contract that was negotiated by an individual. As pointed out by Mr. Brown, local laws are superseded by state laws. And the Taylor law, of which I'm sure Mr. Carcone by now must be an expert, has been there a long time, knows that that is the bible for negotiations between the union and whoever the other negotiating partner is. And in this case, it is the executive branch, not the legislative branch. We never have negotiated with those departments because we, there is case law that says we don't have any right to do that. Now, I read Mr. Brown's memo. And if there is a lawsuit involved, because of anything you do or they do, the Corporation Counsel of the City of Utica will represent the city of Utica, meaning all of you. Because that's his duty. Because if there's a lawsuit, I think you would be probably named as parties. I usually, in those matters, as I did in the, one of the matters, the last court time I was in court with them, I appeared amicus curi, meaning I was a friend of the court. Because I agreed with the administration's position. And we won that lawsuit. They won that lawsuit. In this particular situation, we happen to have also alerted lawyer who's a member of our council. And I, I defer to him sometimes because he's a very intelligent young man. But again, you have to look at the role of the people. I can remember when we had the Kelman argument, there were people out there, and even members of this council, wanted us to sue the planning board. I said, "You can't do that. You shouldn't do that." Because the courts don't interfere between government agencies. Collective bargaining is a whole nother area altogether. We have never collectively bargained. Now, again, did we ever remove a structural position in the government? Yes, we did. Back, I think, maybe about two thousand and fourteen, I can't give you the exact date. We reduced the deputy chiefs of the fire department from two to one. Some of you were here with that time. I don't know if anybody was at that time. But that, and of course, the mayor mentioned that in here, that was really an economic situation. Not only did we remove the deputy chief, who never raised the issue about a contract that he had collectively bargained. Because I don't think he had one. He was also offered to go down to captain. He refused and left. At the same time that we eliminated, excuse me. At the same time the common council eliminated that petition, strictly on economic grounds, we wiped out the police academy. Or the academy, I think it was Police Academy, Testa, that was? There were something like, I don't know, people from all over. They were a week away from graduation. All of them were, it ended. It had, it was on an economic basis.
And the reason, and the reason for that is at the time, they didn't, the, the, the administration offered the fire department the retirement incentive.
Yeah, we did, we offered them.
The police department didn't, didn't offer that.
We offered them outs. And we were assured that, that the union was gonna accept some of those offers, which they did not.
Your honor.
So anyway, that was an economic situation. Here, I'm not gonna get into the question of the Taylor law and the civil service law and the rights of these deputy chiefs and chiefs and their collective bargaining units because I don't know enough about it myself. And I think Charles Brown has more learned in that regard. But I read his memo and I told Mr. Testa, who is a very knowledgeable councilperson, I said, "Our law is pretty complete and pretty clear. However, it doesn't talk about structure and administration. And also, our law is important as long as it does not affect any state law." The Taylor law is a state law. Civil service law is a state law. We don't get into that. Now, if the union, it sounds to me like the union has some very serious problems if I'm listening to Mr. Carcone properly here. Just a minute, Mr. Carcone. I'm not gonna debate with you if you think that's.
No, no, I'm trying to support, I'm trying to support what you're saying.
I'm saying to you that we're not gonna negotiate with the union because we do not have the power to do that, not only by statute, but also by case law. We are not a negot, we do not negotiate any contracts with anybody doing business with the city. That is an executive function. Now, the mayor of the city of Utica said in this memo that this matter we're talking about is not an economic matter. He says that right out. So therefore, it is a different matter. If it's not economic, why is the common council involved in this matter? And if the common person involved gets involved in a lawsuit, it is the city of Utica's Corporation Counsel's office that will be the party representing the other party, which will be the executive. Now, he may sue you too. And I'm, if that occurs, maybe I would appear amicus curi as friend of the court. And that would all depend upon how you, the common council, wish to be represented in that sort of a situation. I cannot prejudge, well, how you're gonna feel if you're served with papers that you're part of a lawsuit that really emanates between the union, an individual, or if the individual sues everybody that's involved because he wants to enforce a contract. Again, that, that will have nothing to do, we didn't negotiate that contract. We can't negotiate that contract. And if they approach us on a contract basis, we're not in it. If it's something else, I think that would be exposed in any legal argument that was presented. And I, I, all I know is the Corporation of Counsel of the City of Utica, Mr. Brown, does not favor this action. For that reason, because there's a contract involved, which he would have to fend against. Testa, does Testa have a question to me, Councilman Testa?
Well, no, let me go around. It's still, it's still.
For clarification on the Taylor law.
Did you have a question to me, Mr. Carcone?
No, you were answering my question, Judge.
What question's that?
You just answered it. What I, what I wanted to know is.
My question, my answer to your question is that this is the first time I've ever seen presented to the common council when they were talking about the complement of either the police or fire department, where a contract was involved and signed and negotiated by the mayor, I presume, and the union person involved. Now, I think that these people, chiefs and deputy chiefs, can be their own union or something like that. Mr. Carcone, you don't.
And here's the problem at the end of the day. To what you're saying, now first of all.
I'm saying we don't get involved in a, in a union, in a union negotiated contract.
The Board E N A is our representation or to approval. None of this was ever even brought up until we got the memo. So whoever was on the Board E N A at the time, it was our council representative, I think it was Celeste Ryan at the time, they approved that contract knowing that they took away the powers of the council. Never were remade aware until we actually got this memo.
So you'll have your turn, Angela. Joe, you have any more questions?
Yes, I do. So, do you want?
Yes, yes. You asked me how it would actually improve the department. How, how, how an adjustment to the complement would actually improve the department? Because you see.
No, what I said is, all the stuff that you are saying is horrible, okay?
Yes.
I agree with that, okay? If this is the way it is. Okay, that one person is not gonna change anything when he's not the guy that's in power.
Can you let me answer?
Can you be quiet? I'm talking right now.
But.
Okay.
The question, so you asked me how a change in, in the complement would fix it and it should be more of a policy change. To you, it was more of a policy change. What, what we're looking for, and this is, this deviates from, from Councilwoman Testa's legislation. If, if the union was to propose legislation and, you know, I said I had a proposal later that I wanted to share. And this would ultimately be what the association is looking for. Is that her legislation is actually amended to recreate a position of administrative chief that Frank Sumey used to hold. I don't know if you remember Frank Sumey.
My neighbor, I live in his old house.
But he used, he, he used to hold the position of administrative chief. If the city of Utica, common council, was to remove the assistant chief's position and recreate administrative chief's position, that would return the position back to its rightful and originally intended administrative position instead of being another management executive personnel. So it would take him from paying what I've done, doctor, lawyer, contract negotiator, all the things that the assistant chief was never even allowed to do when attached to the assistant chief position.
Because it was part of our organization.
And set it back to the daily operations of, and the function of the department overseeing the four deputies. Daily function, being as a fifth deputy chief to respond to fires and actually be part of our department as it was originally intended to. So yes, our fire marshal office still does need help. So what we would be requesting with the common council is actually to adjust the, the legislation instead of removing the assistant chief for an additional fire marshal. We would ask you to move the assistant chief for the addition of an administrative chief in the capacity that the job's supposed to hold and the changing of a firefighter to a fire marshal to assist the fire marshal's office with the additional fifty thousand dollars you'll be saving from assistant chief to administrative chief. So the assistant chief's position is a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar position. The administrative chief is at one oh nine and doing the work in capacity that it's supposed to actually hold. Now, the chief will have his ability to appoint somebody to the position of administrative chief provisional. We would hope that he does that with somebody that has the confidence of the met instead of somebody that has low confidence against him. So I would say that our intern chief, when John Kelly served as intern chief and the assistant chief that had a vote of no confidence wouldn't be the chief's choice or the mayor's choice in creating an administrative chief that goes back to returning, to overseeing the job duties of the department. Now, that's what we'd ultimately be requesting. And in regards to what the judge said, the Taylor law does not apply to this common council. All the Taylor law says is when a union has a dispute, they get to vote a Purb for that dispute. In return, they're not allowed to strike. So we're not allowed to strike as firefighters. And in return from the ability of not being able to strike, New York State has created a Purb Board, Public Employee Relation Board, that reviews disputes. So the Taylor law does not apply to you guys removing the position or reorganizing the table of organizations completely in your purview. The Taylor law only states that if they feel that it violated the grievance that you guys took that action, they could file a grievance to Purb and the Purb arbitrator would make that determination of whether or not the city violated the contract by removing the position. And there's no lawsuit attached to that. When you have Purb, you wait, there is no ability to privately sue. It goes to the Public Employees Relation Board and they determine whether or not you violated the contract. So the only thing that the Taylor law states is if a union has a contract violation, they can apply to Purb for it to be heard. So the Taylor law doesn't infringe on your capabilities of operating as a council and reorganizing the table of organization. It's for the city that if the assistant chief wants to file a grievance, a Purb arbitrator will decide if he violated the contract.
I'm no lawyer, but I would bet if a person had a contract, a binding contract, and went to court, even if his job was removed, he would get his money, he would get the money. So the fifty thousand that were, okay.
I would disagree with you.
So we'll move on to that. It's okay.
After the highest levels of trading in my, my field.
So let me ask you a question.
And I disagree with you because what was negotiated is beyond the local law.
Well, they have a contract.
So I'll, I'll give you another example. So like, we had a contract negotiation that, you know, we wouldn't, our drug policy included marijuana, okay? When the law changed and marijuana became legal for recreational use or medical use, it superseded our contract and that part of our contract is wrong. So if the city came into an agreement, it superseded the local law that the common council controls the labor of the table of organization, there, there is far from guaranteed that that person would win on their grievance under the Taylor law. And the Taylor law only allows them to grievance, not sue, only grievance and then arbitrator impartial would make a decision. But that does not infringe at all on your ability to control the table of organizations.
Okay. All right. So my other question to you is, you are the union president, correct?
Correct.
Is there, in the other, in the fire department, is there a union stewards also?
I have executive board reps at every station. And then I have three other officers.
Because here, here's my, here's my question here. I worked forty-three years for Coca-Cola. I was in the union for twenty-three years. I was a union store, okay? For five years. Well, I'm just, I'm just telling you, and I, believe me, I'm not as good as you because you can fight for the boys better than anyone. My question is, all the time, my job as a union store and our union president was to be sure that the company was following the contract that was negotiated with the unions, okay? We were, we would laugh and say, "These guys don't know what they're doing. They're making us money." They're, they're, because they were so stupid. It was always union against management. And I'm not saying that.
Joe, I want to put that to sleep.
Well, whatever.
Because the annual service for the city of Utica that generates three point six million dollars for the city of Utica was created because the city of Utica and the union worked together. It's not when you create this atmosphere of animosity, and they want you to believe that.
I'm asking this question myself.
Most commoners build that atmosphere, but the union and the city are. Most kind of commons build that atmosphere, but, but the union and the city are supposed to be working together to strive towards better health coverage for the city, better savings on health coverage for the city, inter-facility transports, the, the, the ambulance service itself, we worked together greatly on. So, there's no animosity to give fight tit for tat, except for the creation of obstructionists that are breaking the ability to have labor management, and that's the dysfunction that's going on in the city right now. Now, you as a steward, you never had to go in and file grievances or represent...
I had to do that all the time.
And, and go to court, and, and...
Went to the hearing.
You weren't negotiating new services and sitting down and managing healthcare.
I was in a...
The president's for it.
Okay, so, I, I, my, my point to the whole thing is, all right? My hope, my whole point of all of it is, if they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing, and this stuff that you're saying is right, by removing the fire, an assistant fire chief is not going to fix it.
Yes, it is.
The whole thing needs to get fixed.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
If you remove the assistant chief's position and return it to the administrative chief's position, which is daily operation in the functional capacity of daily operations, it better serves our department, our taxpayers, and is actually more efficient.
Shouldn't the mayor and the fire chief be able to fix the stuff in there now without dealing, without letting an assistant chief run rampant and do what he's got to do?
They should, but they've ultimately relieved themselves and worked in the...
So, if they're still the two in charge, and you got rid of that person, what makes you think they're going to change anything then?
They have to.
Why?
Because you, you're not spending a hundred and fifty dollars on an additional management staff, you're actually replenishing the service of a daily operation supervisor over the four deputy chiefs in the fire department, the thing that people are leaving because doesn't exist right now. There's nobody there looking over the four platoons, operating daily management of the department. I got a, I got a memo from Deputy Chief Guzilli, Deputy Chief Guzilli saying, I'm going on vacation for the week. If anybody has any concerns with house repairs, I will be out of my office for this week. He's a deputy chief, he's there one out of four days. Why is he handling house repairs? He shouldn't be handling house repairs.
But that's what I'm telling you.
There should be an assistant chief that oversees all five days of the week and manages the fire stations to make sure that the repairs are being done.
So, why couldn't that assistant chief that's there now be restructured into his duty?
Because he's in City Hall playing...
Okay, so that's the lawyer, that's the whole thing.
In addition to the mayor.
They should change his role.
But in addition to the seven other people that they hired to play assistant to the mayor, your public safety commissioner, your, your, your negotiation firm that just got hired to negotiate their contracts, they have a lawyer as a public safety commissioner, they're still hiring a negotiation team. And, and how, like I just told you, we said at our first negotiating meeting today, and I looked across the room, I saw a hundred and forty-eight thousand for the assistant chief, a hundred and fifty-four for the chief, eighty thousand for the public safety commissioner, a hundred thousand dollars for the negotiation team. Mark, you talk about low hanging fruit all day long, nobody, they came down here and, remember they, hey, chief, tell them what happens to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars cut out of your budget, how many jobs you're going to cut? But if you talk about his administrative staff, they're untouchable. When you guys weren't lifting the cap, tax cap, he was down here with every department head, except Corporation Council, that was the only department that did come up front here. But he came down here with every department head and said, if you don't lift the tax cap, how many jobs you got to cut, chief? How many jobs you got to cut, chief? But when somebody asks the mayor, look, you're wasting money, this guy's not doing the job you need him to do, and you've morphed the position into another additional unneeded position, that's, you could save money there, no, don't touch my staff. You can't touch my attorney's raises, you can't touch my salary, you can't touch my new assistant chief that I've just turned into my management staff instead of being at the department every day.
Joe, are you done?
I am done.
We're looking for an administrative chief, Joe, that comes back and runs our department.
Thanks, Mark.
Wow. Anyways, all right, Tom Hardy.
Sorry.
I was watching that movie Havoc, gave me on my mind. Anyways, I really have nothing to say, I just, you know, I'm just processing everything out, you know, find out more information, it's what about committee meetings, you know, you just find out more, 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 more information. But at the end of the day, you know, he does have a contract, and I don't think we can, we can cancel it as a council, I really don't. I don't, I don't think we can.
The, the, the fact that he has a contract, this is, this is insanity. You guys all represent the City of Utica, you guys all represent, you taxpayers elect all of you to represent the City of Utica, and not one of you find it suspicious that the guy who went from a two thousand and eighteen contract to part of Local Thirty-two at a hundred and eight thousand dollars, negotiated his own contract where he gets a recognition clause from the union as a union with the protections of the Taylor Law, a nineteen thousand dollar non-contractual raise where they started his base salary off of the overtime that was included, five three percent raises plus any raises we get over three percent, and a no elimination clause.
Terrible, it's a terrible contract.
And, and then, when your job is up, for the common council to make a decision on it, you're arrogant enough to go on a simultaneous vacation with the chief while saying how you're needed when the chief's gone, and you don't even show up in the meeting in order, this Corporation Council, to explain how they could let a recognition clause in a contract like that that takes your power away get through this thing. You, I mean, come on, come on, you guys are, you guys represent the taxpayers.
Come on.
Not right as a judge.
You guys represent the taxpayers, and you let this stuff go on. And, and the mayor wants to...
Now, what, what mayor did this, what administration, this administration or the last administration?
You had, this was under Paul Mary's that it was negotiated, but I, 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 I've hired him as an attorney, we've never gotten a no elimination clause in forty years. Uh, I believe he represents the police chiefs' union, they never got an elimination clause. I don't even think the assistant chief and chief of the fire department had an attorney, and they get no elimination clause.
Now, how long is this?
I mean, you want to talk about becoming a hatchet man and destroying your employees? I, I, I mean, read between the lines, people, why are you getting awarded?
How long's the assistant chief been in, how, how, how long's the assistant chief been up?
So, Paul Mary's administration gave him the contract.
No, no, I'm saying, assistant chief's been around a hundred years?
The person that actually proposed this leg, that contract to E&amp;A, which gives them their initial recognition clause, they're the recognizing legislative body.
Tom, I don't think that was the question.
I'm answering this question.
No, I think, you know...
Who gave that contract out, you asked, right?
Well, the big yellow one, yeah.
So, so, that, the legislative body that recognized him for the first time as a union was E&amp;A, which your new mayor was the president of E&amp;A, or common council president sitting on E&amp;A, he proposed the contract to E&amp;A and then also voted to...
And the council member was Celeste?
And the other council member was Celeste that also threw the...
That's the part, that's the part that...
E&amp;A gave them the right to have a union, they were the legislative bodies.
But the police had the same, the police had the same union.
And they took away your legislative powers during that process.
Joe, Mark's got the floor.
So, I got, so how long, the assistant chief position's been around for a hundred years, fifty years, twenty-five?
We used to, I mean, it's not...
How long's it been around?
The assistant chief isn't even in our book of rules, so, it wasn't even recognized in our book of rules.
Did Chief Brooks have a assistant chief?
Uh, to be honest with you, that's when the breakdown took place. So, when assistant chief, when the chief Brooks was out, they weren't able to hire another chief while he was out, and there was about a year period before he was actually removed from the books, then we only had an assistant chief. And then, the assistant chief retired, and we had interim chief Kelly without an assistant chief. Then, they made assistant chief Angersaw, and they tried to have open competitive testing, they had a chief from outside the department, they had interim chief Barefoot, interim chief Clark, and then ultimately, Angersaw took over as chief. And during that capacity of the two years, both positions weren't really held, which became the breakdown of what the responsibility was of the assistant chief's position. And that's what I'm asking you to remove, this mess of a position that exists now, and recreate it as a position that actually has daily function and daily operation. And you want your deposition, it would be a union position, of course it will be.
So, the assistant chief...
Because they shouldn't be additional management staff, it should be administrative help for day-to-day operations.
And Mark's got the floor.
So, the assistant chief, how long has it been around, the assistant chief? Has it been around fifty, a hundred years?
So, I mean, it's been...
Has it been there from the beginning?
It's come and gone at times.
It's come and gone this time.
It's coming down at times during that period during Chief Brooks.
How about before Chief Brooks?
How long are, I mean...
Well, I just want to know, I mean...
Right now, we have a chief fire marshal position, it's been empty for four months. So...
Well, we never had a really chief fire marshal until...
We had a chief fire marshal before we had an assistant chief.
Really?
Yeah.
All the way back to the end.
Because you go back to our handbook, our actual book of rules, the assistant chief's position, or the chief's position is named in there, and the chief fire marshal's position and their roles and responsibility, the assistant chief doesn't exist in our, in our book of rules. So, that was an add-on later.
Well, it always confused me with the deputy chief and assistant chief, it always has.
Well, the deputy chiefs though...
So, in, in Vingleton, there are four deputy chiefs, three of them are assistant chiefs. But for us, they would be deputy chiefs. So, they have a chief, no assistant chief, they have four deputy chiefs, three of them serve as assistant chiefs. Does that make sense?
It does.
So, it's, it's not, Watertown runs without an assistant chief altogether.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Samantha?
Thank you. So, I, I mean, obviously, there's been a lot of information that's been gathered, so if I go back and repeating some things, I apologize. This is a letter that, a text message that I received, um, this was on March seventeenth. Obviously, we were still going through our budget until March twenty-fourth, but there was a lot of information that I was getting as the budget cuts were coming. Um, the mayor, our current mayor sent a message to a constituent of mine that also forwarded to me, and it said, you should be, what you should be doing, you should be calling the council people who just defunded the budgets for street cleaning codes enforcement and abatement. They literally just took the budget away that I used to start making, maintaining vacant properties. Now, during the discussions that we had with the chiefs, one of the things that were brought up is that they eliminated part of that program because they didn't, the mayor took enough, that, that, I don't remember what the program was actually for, but they took a certain amount out, and he didn't need any of the money left. I think there was like twelve thousand dollars left into that account. Going through that, I also get some other messages on things that the council said they defunded, so on and so forth, and I kind of got to the point where I'm like, listen, like, there's a lot of things that I've seen happen throughout the budget process, I've been around for quite some time, the assistant chief's position has been, again, a topic of conversation, this is not, for, for quite some time, I remember having conversations with Chief Brooks, is that position needed, so on and so forth. Um, on Monday, March twenty-fifth, I sent, I sent the ordinance to the city clerk's office to be forwarded to the rest of the council. Um, I actually sent Chief Angersaw a message, I said, good morning, chief, I said, the mayor keeps reminding the council of the importance of codes and fire inspections of the city, so just to give you a heads up, I'm putting in legislation to discuss the table of organization. Said, removes the assistant chief, fire chief's position, keeps the fire marshal, and adds another fire marshal's position. Make a long story short, through all this process, this is the first time that I've been able to speak publicly on this, on, as, as a council person. I've stayed away from radio interviews, so on and so forth, when it was brought up by another council person that this was done for personal reasons. After this legislation was submitted, I had heard publicly that it was stated that I put in the legislation for retaliation on your behalf, okay, um, over the fact that you had union leave denied. I just want to clarify for the floor, okay? I submitted this legislation on March twenty-fifth. When was your union leave denied?
Not until April second.
Okay, so there is no human possible way that I would have known that his union leave got denied, because it didn't even happen until seven days after this legislation was submitted, okay? So, I want to, I want to clarify that for the record. With that said, after this proposal was submitted, um, there was a number of things that I heard on the radio from the fire chief, I've heard from the mayor's office, so on and so forth. The day after I sent in this legislation, we, a couple of days after, we received a memo from, from the mayor of Utica on March thirty-first, kind of really opened an Pandora's box to a lot of this conversation, which I did not know about, I don't think there were several council people that are, that are in this room that knew about, um, and that was the letter that was sent to us amending, about amending the fire complement, that the council president should read this to the members, okay? And it said that it came to the administration's attentions, that one of the members of the common council seeks to eliminate the position of assistant chief, and that legislation has been proposed to accomplish the same. As the understanding that of this office, that perpetrated purpose of the elimination of this position to, say, address understaffing in the office of fire prevention, which was allegedly caused assignment services not to be completed, so on and so forth. He then goes into state to the council that therefore the position of assistant chief cannot be abolished unless all of the filing happened. Now, when I got to that point, I'm thinking to myself, first of all, you're, you're, you're a council president at the time that this contract negotiation was actually done, we had another council person that was, that approved this contract under E&amp;A. Not once did it ever get brought to the common council's attention, that they were removing the, the powers of the common council not to eliminate the fire chief and the assistant chief's position. Now, number one, I don't know how that clause could ever be put into place unless there was, you want to talk about retaliation, protection and clause against the assistant chief and the fire chief at the time. We've also had a police chief and a deputy chief in the Utica Police Department that never were offered those same clauses, which I find to be, I find to be mind-boggling, that, that in the timeline that all this legislation came about, and the eat, the letters we received and so on and so forth, kind of adds up to the timeline of where the twenty twenty-one contract was signed by, for, for the, for the, for the chief and the deputy chief. On April first, I sent this letter to the mayor, and I still yet to receive a response on behalf of the city's Corporation Council. I said, I request the following information be provided to the common council immediately. I request any proof of the charter or organization needed to be recognized as an employee organization with the Fire Administration Chiefs Association. This includes any filing or approval from the New York State Department of, New York State Department, Division of Corporation, any filings or approval with the New York State Department of Labor, and affiliations with the AFL-CIO. Do the city affairs and the legislative approval clauses of the current chief's contract conflict or hold water over the provision described in your letter? Any legal authority of the mayor and city administration to negotiate beyond the charter and local law, striking the common council of their authorities? Does the mayor have the authority to negotiate beyond his authority superseding the duties of the common council with all employee, with all employee organizations? Um, five, full disclosure of any and all payments made to the, to any employee of the City of Utica's Corporation Council, Corporation Council for private services to Jim Noon in the capacity of his alleged presidency of the Utica Paid Firemen's Relief Association. If any payments were made, and the reason that that's important is because when we get a letter stating that they signed a contract, um, with, with specific binding contractual obligations, okay, and those contracts are also done, if you read, and I just took a picture of it, because I just so happened to be looking into, looking on the, um, the phone directory for the city, and it says, Dave Longaratta, Public Relations, or, or Labor Relations, okay? Now, all this is starting to just really, it, it got underneath my skin, and it kind of just snowballed effect from the original time the legislation was submitted. So, I said, if any payments were made where the proper, proper, public disclosure requirements were made when the creation of the Fire Administrative Chiefs Association received initial recognition in the initial contract bargaining with the City of Utica. Is there any ethical conflict with the City of Utica Corporation Council receiving funds for private services while also serving the city in negotiations, a representation of city employees? Legislative approval, can you please provide based on the contract signed in two thousand twenty-one where the common council, who is a legislative body, approved these agreements? Um, number nine, what attorney or firm negotiated, uh, this contract, and how did the corporation not recognize this conflict prior to, prior to letting the City of Utica enter into it? And did the Corporation Council advise at the time that it exceeds the power of our government body? Number ten, the fact that anyone would negotiate the filing into a contract is a detriment to the city in its entirety. No position covered by this agreement shall be abolished so long as the filing conditions exist. Now, if you're, if you mean to tell me that the assistant chief's position is the most important position, that it can't be eliminated unless you do the filing, the position, the City of Utica operates an ambulance service, and the, and the fire department complement exceeds seventy-five members, what, what would taking fifty members away from the fire department have to do with the assistant chief's contract? What would the ambulance service have to do with the assistant chief's contract, knowing that for four years, that position was left vacant by, by the former, former administration on, on what, on what has, what happened after Chief Brooks left? Therefore, the position of assistant chief cannot be abolished, um, and those were the, those were the clauses that ran into it. Does eliminating the ambulance service and cutting fifty-seven positions help the city? In my opinion, it is nothing but a scare tactic that would put, that was put in the contract, because let's be realistic here, the city still needs to operate. Um, what I do now question is the mayor's intention based on the letter, is it to propose cutting of fifty-seven jobs or three point six million dollar in revenue to exercise our authority among the council, considering the language in the contract? Um, I also find it amazing that the Corporation Council continued to advise and dictate I also find it amazing that the corporation council continued to advise and dictate for the administration, but now over the power of the common council. Then request increase for litigation they create or caused by oversight. How was this even allowed to be negotiated, which causes this dispute? The powers of this common council are the powers of the council, why are we taking those away? What are you going to do if other unions seek to obtain the same language, forfeiting being able to manage any of it? Don't say they won't because they did the exact same thing behind closed doors. Shame on any attorney in the city for working on this. I personally find it hard to believe that anyone would even consider this a contract that don't approve its existence. I know that corporation council has not considered the common council as part of the government, part of government for quite some time, but this is an overreach of government from the executive branch by diminishing the powers of the council. I have yet to receive an email on that behalf. I then receive a letter, I actually then find out that a council person received information from the deputy chief that I never even knew existed. Venice, you're, you're, you're actually attached to this with me for, for a little bit. Do you remember when we proposed for lieutenants for the fire department? And those positions were lobbied against by the assistant chief, and the reason that you voted against, you said, because the assistant chief didn't approve those? I had called Jim Noon after that, and I had asked him, "Why did you lobby against those positions for the department? If one of the reasons that we were trying to get South Utica back, pump truck back operational, you know, so on and so forth." I then received, I, I see this email, okay, or whatever, it was on Facebook or TikTok or whatever, that back in 2021, now, this was never brought to my attention until I actually seen it on Facebook, okay, that somebody sent to me, that Jim Noon actually went to corporation council and filed a complaint saying that I was, I was, I was attacking him, and so on and so forth. Like, how does that, how do I go five years and I never even knew that that actually happened? And I know that, I actually went back and looked in text messages from 2021 or whenever that, whenever you said that I called him in regards to that. Now, I have never, I actually asked the fire chief for his personal number, still have all those messages. I messaged Scott Ingersoll, the fire chief at the time, I said, "Chief," I said, "Can you do me a favor?" I said, "Can you give me Jim Noon's telephone number?" He gave me his personal work number, and he gave me his personal cellphone. I chose the first one that he gave me, called him, had that conversation with him. He was trying to say that I was asking him why he was involved in contract negotiations, this, that, and the third. At the end, I did say as a joke, I said, "Okay," I said, "I just want to make sure that, you know, this, this was the conversation that we had with you telling me, with me asking you why you lobbied against your own department at that time." And I said, "I thought I saw your wife, and she ignored me, breaking his chops. This is the guy that my husband's been on the fire department with for twenty years, okay? Never did I think that that conversation was calling him to intimidate him, and nor was it ever brought up to me until I seen that letter." Now, I find it awful, I find it actually pretty, pretty bad that the fire, that the, that the deputy chief of the, of the, assistant chief of the fire department would actually give personal information like that out without being a foible account, too, which, which that's wrong in my opinion, especially when nobody ever talked to me about it before. And that includes corporation council and the previous administration. So I just wanted to clarify a couple of those things, because that was out publicly, and this is, like I said, this is the first time that I've had the opportunity to speak on, to speak on this. Obviously, if I had a conversation with you before I submitted this legislation, because again, this has snowballed into the effect of everything that happened after this legislation was submitted. After that, became the vote of no confidence. I find out letters from the, from the administration, that corporation council and whoever, and the board of E and A, signed a contract from 2021, taking away and diminishing the powers of the common council. Now, to me personally, I don't think if anybody signed a contract knowing that the city already had it on law, that the common council's responsibilities were solely under the complement of the police and fire department, that they would even put that in the contract. Because if you look at the end of their contract, do you have that, do you have their contract actually in front of you?
Who's that?
Do you have that contract, Joe, in front of you?
The chief's contract?
The chief's contract? Do me a favor, can you read that last part where it says legislative approval? Because this is the, this is the thing that I think that the city screwed up in, because, like I said, the common council, and I checked back into the records to 2021, 2020, there was never legislation that was actually submitted to the council changing that, because there is clauses under the ordinances sometimes, like, they did it when they did the sunset clause on the fire, on the police department. They did it in another one for the fire department. So there is clauses that could be addressed, which again, at that time, that this contract was signed, the council never got legislation to, to change what was actually already on the books. So if you can, can you read that legislative approval for me?
Yeah, this is the, call it the May eleventh, 2021 contract. The last clause is legislative approval. It is agreed by and between the parties that any provisions of the agreement requiring legislative action to permit its implementation by amendment of law or by providing addition type of additional funds therefore, shall not become effective until the appropriate legislative body has given approval. So in other words, it won't become effective until legislative body approves the contract.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. So at that time, the, the common council still has not received any legislation to amend that, which, which is, is again, the reason that we didn't even know that this contract existed, okay? Because I think that if we were even to foil that information, or again, somebody, whoever was on the board, whether it was council president Gleme or council person front, not one time did that ever get mentioned to us. And I, I could go around the room and maybe ask, because everybody was a majority on the council at that time, but none of us knew about that. And that's why I think, and you look at that legislative approval, I think that might have been their intent in the time that they signed that contract, that the council would have had to adjust their, their actual local law, because it does supersede that. That's a chartered law that the common council has, has, has done.
And, and also, let's not forget, this contract also says, I think it's in the preamble, "Insofar as any provisions of this agreement shall conflict with an ordinance or resolution of the city council, the terms of this agreement shall prevail." So I mean, that was included in, in, for a purpose.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So I mean, again.
They're saying it's overriding everything.
By design. I mean, the contract says that by design, in other words, saying, what this contract says goes, even though the council may have authority over the complement. I mean, that was obviously put in there by design.
Right. Not knowing that they, not knowing that they approved it.
The clause that you read out loud is required to be in every collective bargaining agreement.
Say again, I'm sorry.
The clause that you read out loud.
The legislative approval?
The legisla, the clause that you read out loud is required by law to be in every single, it's required by the Taylor law, that, because the black letter law in New York is, if you're binding a municipality for money, you must get the proper authority from the entity that controls the money.
Right, okay. And even, and even with that said, nobody can tell me that even if this position's removed, we just had a thirty percent tax increase almost, like, you know what I mean, within the past couple of years? And, and they didn't go on the backs of the taxpayers. I mean, we went through that budget with a fine toothcomb, and obviously, it's been brought up several times by the current administration that we took that money out, and we got to find ways to come up with ways to generate revenue. But that's, that, 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 that's here nor there.
Can I just piggyback off of, of your que, uh, so Mr. Dunnett?
Go ahead, Bill.
The clause in the preamble, "Insofar as any provisions of this agreement shall conflict with an ordinance or resolution of the city council, the terms of this agreement shall prevail," is that required by?
No, no, that, that is not required by law.
Okay, so this was added.
What's required by law is the, is the, is the very end, and it's, it's, it's so specific, it's got to be in specific font. Right, yeah.
So, so even to go, even to go back to this, in, in, in our general discussion for the actual legislation, so a couple of things have, again, transpired throughout all this. This has been a three-week discussion since the original time that this legislation was submitted. In, in, in reading what the, what the assistant chief's responsibilities are, again, when we had this original discussion, what those responsibilities were, that was, that was sent to us in a letter, they said that the assistant chief was responsible for two-oh-seven eight claims. That was something that was said. I don't see that in any of the language that's been given into us about the duties and responsibilities to that. What I also find kind of very irritating is, number one, neither of the chiefs are here, because I think that these discussions are important to have. And I appreciate the fact that the fire chief did acknowledge the vote of no confidence, but again, three weeks later, and you haven't even had a discussion in regards to labor relations, I think that was just to, to kind of fill us for a little bit with some smoke, you know, until they got to this point. Because I think even after the last resolution was put in, I thought that they thought that that's legislation was going to get defeated without any further discussion. But with that said, I, I kind of find it a little crazy in the, in the discussion that you just, that you just brought up, that one of the reasons that they said that the assistant chief's position is needed was because in case the fire chief has to go somewhere or, or is on vacation, that the, that the assistant chief covers for him. And you just found out last week that they both went on vacation with, left no one besides the deputy chiefs to actually run the department. So how for an entire week does that happen, and somebody's, and some, and there are people still telling me that that position is needed at the tune of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Again, I don't care who's in the position, if the, if nobody was in the position tomorrow, I would still feel the same way that this position should go back to, to where, where it needs to be, in, in its responsibilities, because again, where, where are we at when, you know, you have a, a fire chief and assistant chief in the middle of contract negotiations, when he purposely told me that he didn't have any involvement in contract negotiations, and I was sitting at the table with you? That was the reason that I, I went after him, or whatever, whatever, so he spoke in his letter that he sent to corporation council. So, I, again, I think that this is, this is something that definitely can't be let go. Now, another thing, Tom, that I, that I did bring up.
You're spending a hundred and fifty dollars on a position.
Fifty thousand.
A hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a position that is not anywhere remotely close to what it was originally intended for at the time he got promoted.
I, I agree, because especially when he signed up, he was in the union and then left the union afterward. Can I, can I, can I ask a question? Have, have you seen that, have you seen that happen where somebody signs up for a civil service exam, gets that position, leaves the union, and then goes, makes their own union, or, or, you know, to go on to the administrative behalf? Because to me, if you sign up for a civil service exam, and those job duties and descriptions are changed, like, it reminds me of like ex post facto, like, you can't do anything after the fact. So how is that not grandfathered, that position, in to be where it is without changing it?
So it's funny you mention that, because we had assistant chief Ray Manfredo, who actually went in the union and out of the union and back into the union at the time that Mayor Raffaro got, uh, Mayor Raffaro won the mayorship. It, it always becomes, hey, look, if I'm taken by, cared by the administration, I'm better off as a management employee, and then if there's a potential that I might lose my job, or as a management, he didn't even get recognized as a union. If I have a management position, I'm afraid to get caught now, I better jump back into the union to avoid a new mayor and a new administrator taking, not getting rid of my position, or terminating me under a management executive position. So, so in this case, the, the new assistant chief must have learned from that at the time that he left the union, he actually was given a recognition clause to protect him from having to come back in and out. So yes, the position was even in question back when Fran, Ray Manfredo was our assistant chief, whether or not they were going to keep or to remove the assistant chief spot altogether.
And, and here's part of, and here's part of the problem, the issue that I have too, and even going back into twelve oh threes and ROPs. One of the biggest arguments that people used to have in Chief Brooks to handle this, to handle this question probably the best out of anybody, they said, "Why would you want firefighters involved in codes inspections?" And one of the most, one of the things that stuck out for me, maybe the fact that my husband was a fireman, and I, I just be worried about their safety all the time, but they said when they do the ROP inspections and they do the twelve oh threes, that they actually get to inspect the buildings, they could, they could possibly have fires at, okay? Which makes it safer for them when going inside those buildings. I'm sure that firefighters would not, are not, would not want to be in the codes component of that when their job is actual firefighting. But I, that always stuck out to me, that I always thought that that was important. And when I read, when I go back, if, the last part of the mayor's message said this administration would bring more responsibility if I'll not back to the codes department, calling upon the fire marshal's office for fire inspection only. That, to me, is, is, is a detriment to, to the, to the department. We have some of the oldest structures inside the, inside the city, okay? Majority of them are now new housing, they're, they're old structures. And to be able to go in and inspect them, again, say, my husband's had a fire on Whitesboro Street, and he just did an inspection on that house, he's going to know when he's walking up the stairs, whether or not that's a safe structure, he's going to report that to the other firefighters and other people that are going in there. I'm very fortunate that he made twenty-one, almost twenty-one years of his career, knock on wood, without having any incidences throughout that time. But I think it was the proactive approach from the fire administration, putting in those codes components to the firefighting aspect of it, by helping them understand that. So that, that was something that I just read in that letter, that I, that I, I was a little taken back on, because I, I don't, I don't see how anybody could find that as a, as a positive to the fire department. With that said, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, when, when, God, Ray Beck was in the position of fire chief marshal.
He created the whole codes program.
He created the whole codes program, and I remember, I remember distinctly that the fire department, because it's, and again, in, in the mayor's memo, he's saying that the, the, the responsibility is not the, the fire department for codes through the fire marshal's office. Like, that's where it was actually established, under the previous administration. Like, I was comfortable when Chief Brooks would come into a room with his, with his people, okay? Because Chief Brooks, to me, was a leader. I think he was a great chief, and I didn't get along with Chief Brooks the whole entire time throughout his career. There were some, there was obviously some issues with the fire department getting caught and staffing and trying to build back up that relationship. But I was comfortable in, in his, in his explanation to me. And when I'm seeing that I don't even have a fire chief that, and, and this is, and I, and I don't, this has nothing to do with personal, personal, personal vendettas or personal opinions, or whatever the hell anybody wants to call it. I think that when you have a chief telling me, and I watched it in this room, not advocating for extra firefighters, not advocating for extra positions, and actually advocating against his own department, that leaves a bad taste in my mouth. And I, and I, and I haven't seen that since Chief Brooks, since Chief Brooks was here. I mean, like I just said, the conversation that I had, he voted, he lobbied against, you know, adding, you know, lieutenants back to a position to try and get the pump truck operated back in South Utica.
He's doing it right now, Smith.
No, 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 Jake, this is, first of all, I asked for this meeting to be called.
This isn't part of the legislation.
It most certainly is too, because we just.
You're talking about the.
We just got a letter.
Not the fire.
Right, but we just got a letter saying that they want to, they want to keep the assistant chief, and they want to remove the chief fire marshal.
I'm not saying you're right or wrong.
But that's exactly what the mayor's memo said. That's exactly what the mayor's memo said. Right, but that's his personal opinion. He's telling the council, he's okay with, he's okay with keeping the assistant. He's saying that he's okay with keeping the assistant chief's position, but eliminating the chief fire marshal's office, which the fire marshal's office is the one that implemented the codes component to the actual fire department. Like, that's, that's, that's dicey to me. And I don't run the department, and I don't, I don't, I don't ask to have knowledge to run the department, but, but to actually put that in a memo and say, "You're okay with taking those away," knowing that that's a part of a proactive approach and, and preparedness for, for the men and women on the job, I'm a little, I'm a little taken back. And I, I might think that if somebody that's in that position like that might want to take a different route to that position. But go ahead, Tom, explain back under the, the fire marshal's office, how it got instituted and to kind of establish why the fire marshal's position, in chief fire marshal's position is important too.
You, you were talking about the credibility of the chief and assistant chief as far as advocating for jobs, that's part of the vote of no confidence. But even in the legislation that they, they haven't proposed, but are talking about, it's just the removal of the chief fire marshal and changing it to fire marshal. They're still advocating to downgrade our department, not reorganize our department to become more efficient. So here's our chief submitting his recommendation, or if it's the mayor's recommendation coming from the chief, of just removing a chief fire marshal to a fire marshal, they're actually downgrading services where we're asking you to redistribute your services to make us more efficient. But our chief should be advocating for more jobs, not the.
And here's, and here's the other important part to the chief fire marshal's position, okay? When you have the firefighters go inspect those, those, those buildings, okay? They have a certain number of certifications that they're allowed to in order to, to, to inspect that building, am I correct? I think it's like three, the codes officers, or maybe six or something along those lines. Make a long story short, if you read it.
Your chief fire marshal's listed in the original book of rules in the city charter, they have responsibilities of signing off on fire plans, they, they have so many responsibilities for a, a assistant chief.
A hundred percent, and, and I was, I'm actually floored that that was actually even suggested to eliminate. But with, with that said, Tom, I think it's also important for this body to know that you have a chief fire marshal's position, they also can write tickets and, and act on behalf of the codes enforcement while also proactively helping those guys in that department sustain that preparedness to go out on a fire in case one were to happen to an older or dilapidating structure. And I just, I, I can't believe that we would even think about getting away from that, knowing the importance of that. And that's, that's all I have to say, that had anything to do with the mayor's memo. If you need support and you, to amend the legislation, if there's any council people that do feel comfortable with going towards that administrative chief position, I would be, I would be okay with that and then adding somebody to the, to the fire marshal's office.
If you're asking the union what they're looking for from the coming council, yes, we're asking you, requesting that you amend the legislation from removal of the assistant chief to replace, uh, uh, readding the administrative chief who could also work as a fifth deputy chief, uh, and taking a firefighter position and changing it to a fire marshal position.
And I think that goes back to the fact again-
And you could afford the firefighter, the firefighter to fire marshal with the $50,000 that you're saving from going assistant chief to administrative chief.
And, and again-
It's actually a $30,000 savings, we're returning somebody back to the daily operations oversight in our department. And you're adding an additional third fire marshal to the fire marshal's office to perform those duties. So, yes, I think that would be more efficient if I respectfully request that you could make an amendment that everybody, I would hope, supports.
And, and here's, here's one, one last thing that I'll, I'll bring up and, again, through all of this, even when the contract negotiations were discussed between the fire chief and the, and the assistant chief. There was an, there was an ongoing litigation between the assistant chief and the paid firemen's relief association. I know you touched on that, I listened to your radio interview after that, actually discussing this. And I think that this is part of the issue that I have and it should be a big, sounding off the alarm of what, of what transpired over those last few years. And if you can, very briefly, I won't take up that much time, can you just touch on the fact of why this all kind of snowballed effect after that, after we received that memo?
Yes, so-
And with the, with the attorneys and why you still haven't got a response and so on and so forth?
So, in, in 2012, we had a big retirement group go from the Utica Paid Firemen's Relief Association, it all retired. A retiree held the association until about 2015, 16. Upon his retirement, uh, he never turned it over back to the members. He just turned it over to, uh, James Noon, who claimed as acting president, uh, somewhere between 2018 and 2019. In 2019, 75 firefighters, uh, that are all members of the Utica Paid Firemen's Relief Association, signed a petition, uh, requesting that James Noon turn the fire back over to the members of the Utica Firefighters, uh, Paid Firemen's Relief Association. Uh, instead of complying and turning over, um, everything back to the Utica Paid Firemen's Relief Association, uh, the assets back to the members, he interned, went out and hired an attorney, he hired three attorneys that also worked for Corporation Council privately and began paying them through the funds that belonged to the firefighters themselves. Uh, it took us five years and never once did they make a claim that he was the rightful guardian of that money and manager of that money. Um, after his depositions, we sent the depositions to the Bank of Utica, they froze the accounts, so no more checks can be written. And the first time then we got in a ju, in front of a judge, she made a ruling from the bench immediately mandating elections, which could have been done in 2019 if he had just complied with the petition that 75 firemen had signed. Uh, so, yeah, that, that goes to show that firefighters aren't, that could, can play a part in your confidence and leadership. If 75 firefighters say, hey, turn back our funds over to the people it belonged to and you ignore them and you go and hire three attorneys from Corporation Council to keep the money away from the guys that belong to them.
The purpose of hiring three attorneys, what's the purpose of doing that? I mean, if it's the firefighters' funds, why would you hire an attorney?
I'll let, I'll let him explain what they actually tried to defend during that case.
So, the, the point of the law, the lawsuit was to make the, make the association follow its bylaws, hold an election and conduct a meeting. That's the petition and then that's the, that's the lawsuit, saying, you gotta do this. So, um, the union hired my firm to, on behalf of Local 32, make them hold elections. So, Jim, as the, the non-elected president, as the non-elected president, hired three attorneys. Three, three attorneys from the Corporation Council's office.
Without permission from the people or the bylaws and the budget?
Correct, didn't have a meeting, didn't conduct a meeting, this is a problem, right? This is a basic internal corporate law, you know, bylaws, they weren't following any of the bylaws.
He wasn't following.
He, well, he would, he, there wasn't, there wasn't a, there wasn't a court. And so they, they hired the three attorneys and, um-
Ryan, who were the three attorneys?
It was Dave Longretta, Zach Goran and Joe McBride. And, you know, I'm, lots of lawyers, what they, what their game plan is to delay. That's, that's a, that's a, that's a thing that some firms do. And that's what they did, they did everything in their power to delay this case. Anytime, anytime a judge ordered them to turn something over, they filed an appeal. They filed five appeals to the appellate division, fourth department, they won big fat zero. The very first thing I did in the lawsuit was call up the corp, call up the, the Corporation Council and say, don't you guys think you have a conflict? And raised it with them and said, I think, I think you guys have, you guys have a conflict here, don't you? And, uh, they said, no, we think you have a conflict. I said, really, what's my conflict? Says, well, you represent Jim Noon. I said, I actually don't represent Jim Noon, I have never represented Jim Noon. And so they brought a proceeding in front of the judge, accused me of having a conflict. And of course, the judge rejected it, there's no facts. Then they filed an appeal and went to the appellate division, fourth department, and the, the fourth department, you know-
What was the big deal?
Ultimate, oh-
It's the fund that belongs to the fire-
It's a fund that belongs to the fire department, so it took us, COVID did not help because the court systems basically shut down during COVID, that was not helpful. But finally, um, we were able to have a Supreme Court judge decide the ultimate fact, we are having an election. And-
But, but before we could get that done, the $7,500 of the money that belonged to the firefighters that are members of Benevolent Association were spent by Mr. Noon signing checks to the three attorneys with the firefighters' money without our authority.
And basically, the, the law work was basically delay, 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 obfuscate, delay, delay, delay.
But what, why, 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 why?
At the same, at the same, at the same time, at the same time they received this contract, they were in all, in all elimination laws.
We had, so-
They pursued them.
We had to sue them because they, they, when we sent them the petition, we got zero response. The petition says, here, your bylaws require four meetings a year, you've had none. Your bylaws require elections every year, you've had none. Your bylaws require when the, when the, when a president loses his office, for whatever reason, you schedule an election within a year. Even if there's an interim, you must schedule an elec, the bylaws are crystal clear. And we got no response to the petition, so then you have to sue. And, you know, the law, law process takes time, it's, the, the law grinds along at a very slow pace.
Right, must have done, thank you, I'm just gonna hold the line.
Yes, that would be the reason why we, another reason why I have no confidence in them.
Katie has the floor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr., uh, yeah, uh, Chairman. I do have a couple of questions on this, so, uh, Mr. Carcone, you said that Jim's fees came to $87,500-
Approximately.
For that, uh, representation, how much did your representation cost for this matter?
How much did mine? Zero.
For, well, Mr. Don, you represented him, right?
I represented the, I represented the union suing the relief association.
Okay, sorry to split hairs with that, so-
So, zero dollars out of the benevolent funds and assets. So, none of, none of the money that, none of the money that belonged to the Utica Paid Firemen's Relief Association was used towards that lawsuit.
None of it?
None of it.
Have, have you ever been paid at all from the Benevolent Association?
After a new board was elected and the new board had a actual vote of all the appointed bodies to approve any payment.
How much was that?
It was a lot, it was at least, it was at least equal to what the Corporation Council judged.
Was it double?
No.
Was it, so it was equal?
About that, something like that, about that, I'm gonna say.
Again, that's not the, you'd have to have the people from the Utica Paid Firemen's Relief Association-
Aren't you the trustee?
Their business, no, I'm not.
Of the Utica Paid Firemen?
No, I am not.
You are not?
No, that's incorrect.
Who is?
Um, you'd have to get the board members.
You don't know?
Off the top of my head, I do not know who the trustee is, I know that Ryan Quinn is the president, I know Lou Lasher is the treasurer, I know that-
So, there weren't-
I don't even remember who the secretary is right now.
Are all those, I don't, are all those paid positions? Are all those paid positions on the trustees?
They may be under the new bylaws.
I think they are.
Maybe a stipend?
Okay.
Regardless of that fact, anything that's been taking place since the court hearing, including any payments, has been consistent with the board's operation, with a full complete vote and proper meetings-
Right, and that sounds like was your biggest-
And everything that takes place is actually approved by the people that factually and have been elected and represent the Utica Paid Firemen's Relief Association, not anybody independently.
Okay, and, uh, I want to also go back, you were bringing up 207As and how few, how many of them are getting denied? Maybe you can both speak to this, in the last five years, how many 207As have been denied?
10, 15, 20?
How many have, um, those are all very, what is, how many have been submitted?
Some of them have been overturned where they were approved and later denied, some were discontinued. Uh, you wrote down a laundry list of ways that they've stopped paying-
When I've asked how many were submitted, and maybe you can fact check me on this, I was told probably 100 in the last five years. So, if I'm hearing that 10 are denied, we're talking 10%.
No, so, at, under the, under the department's rules, if I get a scratch at the fire scene, I have to file a 207A claim, right? And literally, a scratch with a band-aid, I have to file a 207A claim.
Yeah.
And the vast, 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 vast majority of those claims don't arise to anything.
Treatment and cost.
Treatment, cost, really anything.
Okay.
So, um, they were not, they were neither approved nor denied, they just kind of go into a file.
Okay.
Now, and that makes really, really, really good sense to do that for reasons having nothing to do with 207A and a lot to do with the New York State retirement system. That's just a really good practice, it's a really good idea, and we're not here to criticize that. Where the problem comes up is when someone is, actually has to go for treatment and you need to have quick treatment. And you can't go into a, you can't go into an emergency room, you can't go to a doctor, you can't say, I want to cover this under my personal insurance. Because the question that you have to answer is, did this happen at work? And if it happened at work, you cannot put a, the claim in under your insurance. It has to be either workers' comp and Utica doesn't have workers' comp, it has to be under 207A. That's just the way it is, that's fine, and the problem becomes, if you are not making a timely decision on the 207A claim, your, your treatment is delayed. We had a guy this year, the, the doctor's saying, you need physical therapy. Pretty straightforward, if I go and sprain my ankle, my doctor's going to tell me you need physical therapy. It was three or four months before the physical therapy was approved. That's a problem, that's a big problem.
Right.
And on those kinds of questions, two dozen, three dozen people where there, where there's delays, my, my office has personally represented-
Maybe five, six, seven, 10?
10 people where we had to like litigate the case, where we had to go to arbitration and the members on the personal hook for these arbitrations. And our record in these arbitrations is pretty high. You know, because then, it's really just a question, did he get hurt at the job? And if he did, you gotta pay for the treatment.
So, that does differ, well, and then I guess moving forward, if we can, we hear a lot of things that we've had, having so many denied claims, if we can just get numbers, that'll help, I think, a lot of us here. I had another question, uh, Mr. Don, you said, uh, you were bringing up in reference to unions have to be of two people. And with the police, with our, um, police chief and deputy chief, do you represent them or is that somebody else?
I have represented them in the past, they asked me to review their collective bargaining agreement. At the time, there was- I think I've done that, you know, the most recent time that I was actually asked to do work for them was probably half dozen years ago. But that doesn't mean I-
I was just curious how that-
It just, you know, I, I help them when they call me.
Thank you, and there was a couple of comments here also, this one's not a question, but it was said that Deputy Chief, Assistant Chief Noon gave me the paperwork from 2021 about a certain councilwoman in this room who, there was a grievance-
It's me, Katie.
Yeah, I know, but rules of order, you're not supposed to address a single person. So, yeah, Sam, frustrated, was called frustrated to the assistant chief. And that paperwork I had, I've had it since 2021, back when the Saver Grant was going on, so-
How did I never get it?
I don't, I, but, but that's, that, that didn't come from him and that's all, I just wanted to clear his name on that one.
So, who did it come from? Can I ask who that, Katie? If you don't mind me asking, who did, if you got, if you had it since 2021, who did you get it from?
I'm never telling you, so-
Well, that's weird.
Yeah, no, because what's weird is that you actually care more about that than your own actions and that's why we're here with a lot of this today. So, uh, when we, I have so many questions. No, I'm, I'm here, guys, guys, I did not do this to you on the floor at all today. So, we're here, if, like I said, I want 207A numbers if we can, um-
May I suggest, may I suggest that the, um, if you're going to get 207A numbers from us, we're, ours are going to be incomplete, okay? Because we're, we're not the custodian of that record.
Okay.
Okay, a 207A claim has to be filed with the department. And I, I would say that it would not surprise me if there's a 207A claim filed every day. Just because, just because it's a dirty job.
I'll give you two examples, I'll give you two quick examples. I went down a hallway at a hotel, went in, turned out to be a meth lab. Took a big inhalation, felt a burn in my, my chest. Didn't get any treatment, was okay, filled out 207A application. 20 years from now, I get cancer, I'll be able to reference that call under my 207A paperwork. Now, if that totally killed my insides and I went out on treatment or disability the next day, then there would be treatment required with a approval or denial for the claim as it moved forward. Then there's the additional to, we have claims that are filed by members, so you heard me reference the guy with less than two years on, uh, earlier today.
Yeah.
So, he was told, he was told that, uh, once he received his denial, that, he was told by the assistant chief that, hey, look, it's denied, but I'm going to continue to review it and I'll go into it and I'll look at it. And he turned to his officer and said, I got the denial paperwork, should I go to the union? And he was told that if he goes to the union, it'll automatically be denied. If the assistant chief tells you that he's going to work on it, you know, trust the assistant chief to work on it. Uh, a month later, I got a phone call, the guy told me that he got his claim denied, I said, okay, fine, we got 10 days to file the paperwork on your appeal process. He goes, well, that's the problem, I said, well, what's your problem? He says, well, that was a month ago. And I said, well, how am I supposed to help you a month later, you have 10 days to file your appeal? And he was like, well, I was told that it was still being under consideration and, uh, you know, I, I don't know, you know, if I should have came to you then, but I was told that it was still under consideration and the only consideration I would have is if I didn't go to the union, as soon as I went to the union, then it would be shot down. So, that went to go prove, even when guys don't come to the union, they're still getting denied on their claim. And, uh, that actually like, was like leading him on and telling him that it was still under review, bringing him past his appeal period, uh, before he even came to us and was able to file an appeal. So, I wouldn't even have never known about that, uh, unless he came to me. So, there are claims that are going-
When was that one?
I can't tell you who it was.
No, when?
Oh, I'm-
No, I wouldn't ask who.
Maybe within the last six months, nine months. Um, and, uh, you know, I can't tell you how many guys are going through that process, they probably don't come to us, uh, for us to record every single one.
But, but there, there's a way to find out, ask the chief.
Sure.
That, I mean, they have the custodian of the record, you know?
Yeah, and if I can-
They better have it.
They're actually, they're actually supposed to review every workplace injury with the employee organization, uh, which doesn't take place either.
And I want to go back to the-
And those incidences are supposed to be posted at each fire station, uh, per, per, uh, when was the last time they came in? Who handles the public buildings?
One less.
Pesh.
Pesh. Uh, Pesh actually cited them for not, uh, setting those records at each fire station on who's got it hurt and how, at each location.
Thank you, and I'll go back and look through with those. Uh, the last thing I want to touch on is, I want to go back to the Carcone versus Noon case, I read through all of it. I know the, the-
Let's be clear, there were six other members on that case also.
Sorry, yes, it just is in my mind when I read it, that it was Carcone, so the union-
Six, six, no, it wasn't the union either, it was six individual members of the Utica Paid Firemen's-
On behalf of the entire membership.
Right.
It's a, it's a, what's called-
That's what I'm referring to. So, with that, um, there was a comment made that never once was Noon claiming the designator to, of the money, but that's not even what the case was about, was it? It was about whether or not it would, the bylaws were had and who was like properly in place. I don't think, a judge never ruled on, yes, this money can or can't be kept. What happened was that-
Oh, no, no, so what the, what the judge ruled was-
It wasn't other than about the money.
Turn over the money to the new organization.
Okay, let, let me interrupt for a second.
This is actually important because they keep bringing it up.
This, this case has, is, is, has nothing to do with the city, it's a independent-
They keep bringing-
It's an independent fund that's between the fire department and the individual.
The state insurance.
So-
What I don't like about that though-
Between the firefighters in their own organization.
It's, it's right, and it's not-
Has nothing to do with the city, even though, even though city attorneys were hired in this case.
It's not affiliated, that doesn't mean it, it's not affiliated with the city.
Right, and I agree with that, Jack. Uh, what I don't understand is that people are bringing it up as if there is, um, as if it's an issue of, well, one conflict of interest, but it's also trying to discredit the assistant chief, so we will remove him. And people are making it sound like he was taking money from the union or something, that's not what this was. It sounds to me like, uh, just when I'm reading this, that nobody ever cared about the bylaws until it was time that the union wanted the money for their funds for it. You don't have to make any of your own, uh, conclusions on that.
The union's never had control of that fund.
Right, but how much does the union get from it now?
And still does not.
And it still does not have control of that fund, zero.
How much, not control, because we're not trying to, don't split hairs with me on these words, I want to know.
There's an official board that makes the determinations and decisions that the local is not associated to.
And those, so all of a sudden, we vote in these members?
They are an independent board.
And you said 75 people signed the petition, right?
Representing the Utica Paid Firemen's Relief Association, not Local 32.
Okay.
And what they decide to do with their funds is by their own process and bylaws.
Okay, so these people who happen to be on the union-
When the funds were being dispersed, you asked me a question, Katie, I'm answering you.
Did I?
When the fund, yes, when the funds were being dispersed under, under Jim Noon, because it wouldn't be assistant chief Noon in the Benevolent Association, it would only be Jim Noon in the Benevolent Association. When the funds were being dispersed, it wasn't by the determination or decision of a board, it was made independently.
Right, so there were, there were-
And now, the courts returned it back to elections and an official functioning capacity board that has a vote and follows bylaws for the dispersals.
Right, and that was separate than the dispersals. And that was separate than the disbursement, though, of the case.
That board is completely 100% separate from Local 32.
Okay.
There's been no findings on whether the dispersments previously were proper or improper.
Right, that wasn't relevant to that.
Listen, listen. Hello, timeout, time. All right, let's move on. This has nothing to do with this...
And that's kinda what I wanna say, too. This really has nothing to do with it, but I think that people are being really misled. It was kinda brought up in here that, well, why, why would this happen? And it just sounds like it's sketchy, and it's not, and I feel like the whole story's not out there. So, if you wanna have it, we will.
I didn't start with that word.
I think they were referring that to the contract that was being negotiated at the same time.
That's exactly what it was.
I, I don't think it was that, anybody acting sketchy. I think we were referencing dates, as you were comparing dates in your own conspiracies.
Oh, that was the other thing. Oh, well, one of them I wanted to touch on.
Referencing dates in your own conspiracy. I think people were referencing dates from the checks that were being written to Corporation Council coinciding with the same time in negotiations of a recognition clause in the contract that was received.
Okay. And the last thing I wanna touch on is that it was said that I was associating retaliation with the letter, your union leave being denied seven days after Samantha entered in this legislation to the council. And no, I didn't know it was denied. I don't know or care. I was saying that the first letter you got about your union absence was seven days actually prior before her legislation and also a day after retirement. So, I'm just clearing that up. It wasn't about that part of it.
Katie, this isn't a Jim Noon revenge tour, as you mentioned, in your last video. I, I mean, it's just guys, 64 out of 75...
Then why does this case...
Trying to come in and do their job...
Why did this case get brought up at all?
And don't have confidence in their leadership.
Then why did this case get brought up at all?
What do you...
When, maybe you one time and all the other time.
I just explained that. You brought up correlation, correlation of dates?
No, no, no.
With conspiracies.
This got brought up ahead of time.
So, the dates were brought up in the same...
Tommy, why did this conversation get brought up at all? When it came up about the...
We just said it six times at Corporation Council.
No, no, no. You said there were, you were saying the conflict of interest.
The conversation of the legislation.
But what does it have to do with the assistant fire chief? Absolutely nothing. That position has absolutely nothing to do with it.
You actually made a video. It went on the radio.
Those conversations took up, and those conversations went up after the legislation, not before it.
Whenever you wanna talk about the benevolent fund, I don't know why you guys brought it up on the radio. You did first, it's fine, but you brought it up here again tonight, and that's where my questions came from. I wasn't gonna touch it unless somebody else opened their can of worms.
It's an additional reason why, why guys don't have confidence in his leadership.
But that's a person, that's not a position.
I, I understand that.
That's weird, that's not our role as legislators.
I completely understand that. But there is a capacity of the position. There is a capacity and a responsibility to the assistant chief's role and responsibility. The fact that that contract changed everything, in addition to the redistribution of the duties that are going along with it, has destroyed the actual validity, necessity, and purpose of the assistant chief's position in its whole.
And it has nothing to do with...
If there is a correlation that you're asking for, yes, that's, that's part of it. The fact that it was removed from the union, made into a management executive position in the redistributions of duties without a change in the actual job description or title that he was hired under. So, yes, we need somebody in the capacity of what it was formerly created and existed for.
Why did everybody start caring about this on March 25th?
What's your question?
Where did this come from, on March 25th?
Okay.
All of this time?
That you're gonna have to ask the person that put the legislation forward, that I was not part of at the time that she put the legislation forward.
And we didn't get the memo from the mayor until March 31st, which was six days after the legislation was submitted. That opened up man or his box.
There was a lot going on that month.
There was.
There was a lot going on that month.
Well, you guys all know what it sounds like.
During that month, we had five retirees, five guys interviewing in a different location. We had the budget, the budget talks, where we, where the department heads all came in and threatened what would have to come out of everybody's individual budget, in addition to the amendments being vetoed by the mayor as they went forward to the mayor. And then, I believe you put it in your actual statement that it was another cost savings measure, that if the mayor was going to veto...
There was an actual email that was sent to the council, from our clerk's office.
And once I received the legislation, we prepared a, a opinion letter from Local 32 that obviously and clearly isn't coinciding with the legislation as written. As I have discussed with the council today, I am looking forward to be amended for the betterment of the department and for the functionality of the department as it should be. Now, I was willing to talk to you about that, but you had denied wanting to talk to me at all simply because it was Samantha's legislation.
It was about retaliation.
And you said, "If I actually came to you first, you would even have proposed it for me." But because I went to her, you're not gonna support it, and you're, you're not gonna work with me at all.
Because you went to her.
Because I went to her.
You went to her.
By your email, not because I did.
No, I was saying, no, I just don't support the corruption behind it, and I don't trust her motives.
Your text message said I went to her, not that I actually...
I don't trust corrupt, the corruption.
All right, well, listen.
And that's all that today.
You, you, you told my uncle he's corrupt, but he didn't vote on anything, and you guys didn't vote on it.
But I think you were corrupt.
Tom, Tom.
I could tell you all over him.
Listen, stop, right now. Stop, we're gonna move on, all right?
I'm all set. Thank you, everybody.
Stop.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Bob?
Well, I've sat here, listened, and, and there's a lot that has come out tonight. You know, the powers of the council is the, the complement. The, the issues going on in the fire department, I feel bad that, you know, we don't sit on the, the negotiations for your contracts, so we don't see what goes on. And, and half the time, they don't even come to us for approval, as, as stated from the 21, the power taken away from basically the, the council. You know, the, things have to be corrected, but I don't think the council has the wherewithal to take care of the, the problems in the department. We can work on the complement. These other issues, you know, we, we can give our input, recommendations, hopefully get them fixed, you know, because I wouldn't wanna work in an unsafe environment, but there's, there's a lot for me to digest, and I appreciate you coming in tonight.
Thank you, Bob, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And, and, you know, you do have the authority as the council to make the changes that would, would better service our department. And the fact that if nobody hears us, whether it be the city or the council, our environment's gonna get worse. I mean, the arrogance that nobody even came here tonight, and, and what they're getting away with already. Those 65 guys are gonna go back to work, and it's just gonna be worse, knowing that now the mayor's not gonna change anything, the council's not gonna change anything, nothing's gonna change, we can continue the way that we are. And that shows because they never even called for a meeting after the vote of no confidence, they're not even concerned.
All right.
You, you guys are our last hope to reservice that department to where it can be functional.
Thank you. Joe, you're up.
Yeah, just a comment, food for thought on the 2021 contract that we were discussing earlier. I think this contract has brought to light a glaring loophole that has the potential to be exploited. What keeps a future Board of E&amp;A from taking the top 10, or 15, or 20 members of a department and unionizing, putting it in a contract? Now, the council controls the complement, but we heard from the judge that the Taylor law supersedes the charter. So, now, you're saying, well, the council controls the complement, unless there's language where a state law kicks in. So, this, this contract from 2021, it has two members. What if the next one has 15 or 20?
120.
And now, and now the council's charter authority to revise a complement is superseded by the Taylor law because they put it in this contract. And by the way, doesn't even come before the council. I think this is a, a big issue, a big potential loophole that, not by this Board of E&amp;A, maybe not in five years, 10 years, but one day, could be exploited. And I think that's something that we as a council have to consider, to close that potential loophole now that we know it exists. I think that's incumbent upon us.
What's the contract again?
2026.
Yeah, what?
March 31st.
He could retire here tomorrow, though, then the contract would be null and void, so you're missing the point. Even if that said person is not in that position, it's the, it's the whole point of keeping that position back to, and not in the administration. Back to back to the day-to-day operation of what the position was actually before it. That's what everybody's gotta get away from, too.
It doesn't discontinue at the end of the contract.
Well, it'll keep going unless there's a new contract negotiated, my reading of it. So, by, by October 1st, chief, assistant chief have to submit a proposal for a new contract. If one's not reached by the next fiscal year, the current terms will stay in place, just like any, I mean, it's pretty standard. Just like any contract will stay in effect until new terms are reached. Sometimes, as, you know, we know from the past, I mean, contract negotiations, not with just the city, but, you know, county, state, can take years to, to negotiate, so...
You said?
Just, just so you know, Joe, we did ask for that today. It's a stipulation in our contract. And if we receive that for 130 of our complement, we're running at 120 now, then the council wouldn't have any authority to change our table of organization either. And do you think they would be challenging it if they couldn't cut out of the 130? But they're gonna be afraid to challenge it when it's two?
Well, and, and I appreciate the point that's made by that. It's exactly exemplifies what we're just saying, so, thank you for that.
It was fun to make a proposal.
We made it this morning.
All right. The chief delegates authority to subordinates while maintaining the ultimate accountability for the Department of Performance. So, that, that's telling me that, and I'm gonna make this quick, because I don't even want, it's telling me that the fire chief could tell the, the assistant fire chief anything he wants him to do. I mean, you have, you have job performances and what your duties are on that job, but the, the actual fire chief is the all, overall commander underneath the mayor. So, if he wants the assistant fire chief to do something, he has all the authority in the world to have him do that. That's all you're saying there, all right? Now, look, and let me get down to Tommy. The, this is what I concern, this is my concern. And some of the stuff you said was egregious, in the sense that, that there is some rot going on in there, and there's some real issues within the department. And I don't mean in a bad way for you or anything like that, but you have a lot of problems that I see, you know, with the, with the 207As, with the delegation of responsibilities, with, with Station 7, having issues over there. So, I, I don't think that we could fix this. I don't think, and I think that if I were the, the union president, or I was the, and I was the mayor, and I was the police chief, I'd ask some type of organization to come down, some type of arbitrator to come down, in the sense that, take a look at what we're doing here. What are we doing good and what are we doing bad? And what changes are they gonna recommend that we need to fix some of these issues here? And any organization that's in problem, that has problems, this is what's done. You bring someone in to look exactly what you, what, you know, how are we doing things here? What can we do? What can we change? Where are some of the issues where there's some, you know, where, where it's unfair to our, it's unfair, it's unfair to our constituents?
That's where you, you have labor management meetings.
Well, I know that, but you know what? Here's the issue with that. No, no, listen to me. Here's the issue with that. You go to a labor, a management, labor management meeting, you meet with the mayor, the mayor doesn't agree with you, you don't agree with the mayor, you all get together, nothing happens. If you bring an outside organization coming in that has nothing, that, you know, has nothing to lose, has, you know, has no, no money on this game or no money, and you have them come in and you look at them, look at the organization, and, and that has experience in, in, in fire departments, has experience in organizations, has experience in, in, in how a city is supposed to run, they come in, they take a look at your fire department, and then you take some of their recommendations that you, both sides agree on, and then, then, once that's running, then make your little, little, you know, changes that you need to make. But I don't think, there's too many, it seems like there's too many issues here to just to change one guy, and it's not gonna, it's not gonna make a difference.
All the issues you made, named were managerial issues.
Right, but maybe they have a different, maybe they have a different take on that.
They're all managerial issues. We don't have any input or say on those determinations.
Okay, Tommy, so when you bring somebody in, I'll get your... When you get somebody in, and they, and they look at this, an outside organization, you should be happy to do this. You should be happy to bring it in.
You have, you have to fund that and create that.
I think we, I think we could, we...
That's a different story. That's a different story. You have to fund and create that organization and...
Well, it's not an org, it's not, I'm not creating the organization.
You have to fund and create that entity to look.
We would go out and look for an organization that's gonna, it's sort of an audit, but you gotta have guys that are, that are, you know, former, former...
You could look at another department, you could just look at simply as in the UPD.
What do we have an attorney for? What do we have a public safety commissioner for?
They're not having...
What are we hiring outside agencies?
They're not here... Sam, I got it. They're not here to, to inspect you, the, our public safety commissioner. He right now, they, that's, I'm talking about an outside agency to come in, see what's going on, do some interview with the people here, make some...
They should have did that instead of hiring a labor relations attorney.
There's a serious problem when you've got a vote of no confidence. We call a meeting, the mayor shows the disrespect of not having nobody here, we got a public safety commissioner, he's not here, we got a police chief and assistant police chief that the discussion's about, they're not here. Since he didn't get his 13-point raise, he shows nothing but disrespect to this whole council.
This is what I'm getting at. You're gonna have to bring an outside agency.
He should be here. What good would it be?
I didn't hire him.
But, okay.
I didn't hire him. I didn't hire him. I'm telling you what I...
Jake, this is, this is, this is my point. You got a public safety commissioner, you got two chiefs, you got a negotiating firm, now you wanna hire an auditing firm. You could hire a million people.
Maybe you're right, Tom. I don't know. I don't know.
Well, it just goes to show you, nobody's willing to come. They knew what the meeting was about, and they're not here.
If I was in charge, that's what I'd do.
All right. Listen, thank you, everybody, for coming. I appreciate it, and I gotta give Tommy one.
Okay, just a second.
Go ahead, please.
Guys, look, I, I understand that you guys don't think this is your responsibility.
No, 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 no.
Or you may not think that you can make the change. Or you may not think, or you may not think you can make the change. All, all I'm asking you guys to do, all I'm asking you to do is consider the guys that have to work in this environment. And, and, and that is getting negated and, and drowned it out. You had fifty-three guys have no confidence in the chief, sixty-five, or sixty-four guys have no confidence in the assistant chief out of seventy-five. It was good enough to make a change in the DPW. Nobody's making the change for us.
How many members are there total? One twenty?
Right now, we have about one hundred and twenty.
Can I get a second to close this meeting? All right, the meeting's closed.
You could have a outside discussion.